Welcome to the regular meeting of the Arlington School Committee on Thursday, December 12th. We're going to open the meeting with some new artwork from our Bracket School. I'm going to start with Board A, it'll go in order. This is Grade One, Using Line Constructively: Tree Line Drawings. For the first lesson of the year, first graders revisited the element of line and discussed how lines could be found everywhere in our world and that artists can use different kinds of lines to express their ideas more fully. Students examined and discussed several examples of line drawings by various artists, explaining how each artist used line. Next, students were shown several paintings of trees done by different artists and explored how each tree was represented differently, using various and often unexpected types of lines. Students were led to notice how using a particular type of line changes the way we expect a tree to look. Finally, students were instructed to create a line drawing of their own choice. That said, everything in the picture had to be constructed from a variety of appropriate lines, and the subject had to include at least one tree. They were encouraged to think about how lines can be used to represent many parts of a tree and different species of trees. Students were given artworks created by Asian artists which depicted different species of trees during different seasons to help them think about the many ways line can be used. Over to Board B, which is Grade Four, Pinch Pots Revisited. Students in Grade Four were shown an example of ceramic pinch pot vessels created by a method of clay construction known as hand building, which differs from wheel throwing construction. Pinch pots are a fundamental method of construction created by using the thumbs and fingers simultaneously to squeeze and press the sides of the vessels into uniformity. Artist examples all depicted a variety of techniques which were used to create interest in more complex designs. Techniques include relief building, scoring, textural impressions, and altered form that differed from the standard circular form of a traditional pinch pot. Students were then guided through the pinch pot construction process together, and then were later encouraged to include some of the additional techniques discussed in the artist exemplars. Once the pots were fired, pieces were glazed with color and fired a second time. Moving over to Board C, over here, Tiny Treasure Boxes. Third graders discussed the use and decoration of container design. They discussed how this wooden box created by a Japanese artist had the special purpose of storing incense, noting the planning and execution of design upon a three-dimensional cube, and its possible function and purpose allowed students to realize that everyday objects can be made beautiful by artistic skills. Students were given a template of a box, which they were instructed to decorate using pencils and/or markers, giving special attention to how one side of the box could impact another side, as well as the top and bottom, in a wraparound design. Attention was brought to the fact that there are several ways to accomplish a wraparound design, but a specific theme had to be chosen to successfully unify all the sides of the box. Over to D, we have Grade Two, Paper Pendants. Why do people wear jewelry? Students in Grade Two learned that people everywhere have decorated themselves with jewelry since ancient times, often for many different reasons. Students examined and discussed several different artists' pendants, some of which incorporated neckline structure as well. The examples ranged in time and period materials, and students were asked to look for clues to help them determine how each pendant was created. They enjoyed seeing how different cultures have varying styles and how artists use the same materials differently, and how styles have changed over time. Despite the differences, however, some jewelry-making techniques have remained similar over the centuries. Students were instructed to design and create their own pendant from paper and aluminum foil. They were encouraged to include additional decorations with markers and pencils. And finally, all the way in the back, Board E, our Observational Drawing Still Life, Grade Five. Each school year starts with drawing a still life arrangement for students in Grade Two to Five. In past years, each grade approached the still life differently, using different skills or fresh approaches to their revisited subject. But after collecting student responses for their hopes and dreams of art class this year, every class contained a large number of responses stating hopes for learning how to draw better. I decided to address this by including a guiding discovery of eight different drawing materials ranging from pencils, pens, charcoals, and pastels. Students were led through a series of explorative techniques that can be done with each material to create more interest in drawing. These techniques include hatching, blending, stippling, and graffiti. The level of interest among students grew considerably. Once the exploration was over, students in Grade Three through Five were then directed to draw the still life, but the choice of drawing in their sketchbooks of choice, but with the choice of drawing in their sketchbooks, or choice of drawing paper, were allowed to choose which of the eight drawing materials they would prefer. Many students chose to mix materials, opting to draw some objects in ink and others in oil/pastel, for example. All students were required to include at least one of the drawing techniques they were taught in their guided discovery session. I was very pleased with this level of renewed interest for observational drawing, as evidenced by the many comments from students. Those are actually examples from Grades Three, Four, and Five. All right. Congratulations to all the Bracket students on their wonderful art.
Can I recognize David Ardito?
Sure, yes. Oh, yes, of course.
And I would like to recognize David Ardito, our Director of K-12 Visual Arts, and applaud him on the direction that he's taking our art department.
Great, thank you. There's a name public comment this evening. Yep, all right. So we'll move right ahead with our overview of the ELA department. Dr. Bodie, do you want to throw a field?
Well, I'll introduce Deb Perry, who's the Director of ELA-K12, and she's going to bring up the literacy coaches from the elementary. What? Oh, and Justin's coming too, Justin Barazza, who is a high school teacher. So we need another.
Shannon's just going to provide music in the background.
Thanks, Shannon. You could use that. All right.
Hi, everybody, thank you. We're going to talk a little bit about the goals at the elementary and at the high school.
Excuse me one second though, could we introduce Mariette and Ally?
We'll do this. We're going to talk about the goals at the elementary and at the high school, and I know we only have 15 minutes, and the big question is, who's got the hook? What happens if we go beyond? So you'll have to let us know. So we're going to start, Ally's going to talk about first grade, I think, and third grade, Maria's going to talk about, and then later Justin and I will talk about the high school.
Can we have everyone just introduce yourself as you start?
Hi, I'm Ally Megan Hayes. I'm one of the literacy coaches, and I work mostly with first and second grade. So I'm going to talk to you tonight about our work in assessment and intervention in Grades K to 2. Over the past two years, the literacy team has paid really close attention to the issue of early literacy screening and intervening. We sat in on sessions with Melissa Orkin, who's a consultant with our district. We've attended Edco workshops with other researchers in this area. We've compared notes with other Edco districts on what they're doing, and we are learning about the new legislative legislation. We came away with the understanding that there were specific things we could do to improve our assessment system. We need to ensure that we're screening in the right areas, intervening in a targeted way, and providing strong Tier One instruction to ensure that students are getting the foundation they need to be proficient readers. We understood that we needed to pay special attention to the skills the research has shown to be strong predictors of future reading success, especially rapid naming, the ability to quickly retrieve known symbols, and timed assessments with reliable and valid test scores, especially in the following two areas, which have been found to be strong predictors for future reading success, phoneme segmentation and nonsense word reading. We reviewed our curriculum and assessments in the areas of phonemic awareness, phonics, and fluency, to ensure that we're addressing these areas. Through the review process, we determined that Grade One was the place to start this year. We've added additional universal screeners. We selected the DIBELS because it's a standardized, research-based, reliable and valid assessment. We're working with classroom teachers, reading specialists, and principals to use the information learned from assessments to implement targeted interventions. Next year, we're going to roll this backwards to kindergarten and forward to Grade Two, and we're laying the groundwork for that this year. I also want to describe a little bit of the work that we're doing with first grade teachers this year, because they're the ones who are most impacted by these changes. Our focus this year is to help first grade teachers understand how to administer the assessment, interpret the data, and how to support students with small group instruction based on their needs. Teachers were trained in the new assessment this past May. They were given a refresher in September at their first day back, and coaches and reading teachers were available to support teachers during the assessment period this fall. In October, the first grade teachers learned some small group lessons and routines that can support phonemic awareness and phonics instruction. We looked at color-coded data to form small groups based on which students would benefit from more direct instruction with segmenting and blending skills. They were also encouraged to progress monitor, to follow select groups of students who might need more support. After the professional development, I've been joining data team meetings and modeling small group lessons in classrooms. A lab site model has been really successful, where teachers all come together in one room to observe me doing a small group lesson, and then they go off to try that lesson right then and there with coaching support. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Maria Mato. I work with upper elementary, and I'm going to talk about the district literacy goals for both Grades Three and Five. So our goal in Grade Three is to introduce the new Lucy Cockens units of study. This year, we're introducing the third and final unit, Reader's Workshop Unit for Grade Three, and that is a nonfiction unit. It's called Reading to Learn. This unit focuses on the foundational skills third graders need to learn how to read and write about nonfiction texts. The workshop model is newer to Grade Three. It's, we're in our second year of implementing two units. One of them is called Building a Reading Life. That's the introductory unit to Reader's Workshop in third grade. Another one that we did last year, and it was the first year we did it, was called Character Studies. It's a book club unit where children meet in book clubs to discuss and learn about their books together. The new unit, because the teachers are newer to this as coaches, we're working on really getting them to understand the components of the Reader's Workshop. So we're modeling mini lessons for them, we're modeling how to confer and meet individually with students, and we're also modeling small group work so they can differentiate their instruction within that independent reading time. When we've done that is through lab sites like Ally was talking about, where teachers will come into a classroom, observe a lesson being taught, coming with the teacher to see how small groups and confering is run, and then being able to debrief about it. For Grade Five, we have a new unit that was introduced this year. It's called Interpretation Book Club. It's the second reading workshop unit for Grade Five. In this unit, students are able to interpret the meaning of texts through uncovering themes, the deeper meaning of texts. They also learn to understand the use of author's craft and also understand characters' motivations. Next year, fifth grade will have their third and final Lucy Cockens unit. It's called Tackling Text Complexity. Two schools are actually implementing that this year. It's their second year piloting this particular unit. This unit is a nonfiction unit. It's designed for students to grapple with very difficult texts, understand also how to summarize key points of nonfiction, and also to analyze author's craft in informational
The high school goal for this year was narration. It had to do with narration, and it was a logical extension of two previous goals which had to do with discourse and something we called ownership. And I think those terms may seem a little vague to you, so I thought I'd talk for a minute about the connection among those and also what narration means in terms of the work that we do with high school students and also with middle school students. In the simplest form, narration is telling a story. When you're thinking about writing a story, one of the important things that has to happen is that as the writer, you have to understand what you're writing about and be able to own it. And what we had noticed in terms of both middle school and high school students over the past three or four years was the difficulty students were having figuring out how to put themselves into a story. The previous work, or most of the work that we have done over the past many years in terms of writing, has to do with claims and evidence. That's what the Common Core has asked us to do, and that's what we've done pretty naturally. It's a very important part of writing instruction. You have to have an idea that you want to prove, and then you have to have evidence to prove that. And sometimes that process doesn't allow the student or the student's ideas, or at least students don't necessarily feel that it allows them to come into it. So we've worked to try to figure out how to help students put themselves into the things that they're writing. At the middle school, three or four years ago, this began with a unit on speaking, and the middle school, particularly the eighth grade teachers, were interested in helping kids stand on their own, both literally in front of a group, but also stand on their own in terms of having an idea and supporting it and explaining it. And this was as much about writing as it was about developing a sense of confidence in the middle school students, which was something that we were a little worried wasn't as evident as we wanted. The way it showed up in the high school was particularly in the junior and senior year when we were working with kids around writing the college essay. And the amount of support that students needed, the amount of time that they wanted to spend, both with teachers individually after school and in classes, was extraordinary, and it derived from a lack of confidence in terms of being able to tell a story. That's what the college essay is. It's telling a story, and usually it needs to be a really small story that's well-developed. And we understood, as this was, as over the period of three or four years, as we were getting more frustrated that we didn't have time to do this work, that we probably needed to think about narration in a more comprehensive way. So we're trying to, we're not trying to, we are actually integrating the narrative form more into the writing that we do at all levels to give kids practice in this exercise. Before I turn over to Justin, just one other thing. The narrative form, it's commonly thought that if you, the person who tells the story owns the story, and you know that if you've ever watched two children be involved in, let's say, the breaking of a lamp, and they run to be the first person to explain what happened, and they know instinctively that if they get to tell the story first, they're going to turn, it's going to turn out better for them. And so telling a story has a point of ownership to it, has a point of power to it, and that's an important thing for kids to understand. But as readers, it's also an important thing for kids to understand. So when you're looking at something that's being written, and this happens, this happens obviously in nonfiction, but it happens in fiction all the time, where the narrator tells the story, and certain things are left out, or certain voices are left out, and we're working very hard to help students understand that there are other things going on in any story. It doesn't matter if it's a written story or something that you're watching. There are other interactions occurring and other voices that may or may not be heard that are important to know about. So that whole discussion of how storytelling actually is about power is something that we've been integrating extensively into the work that we've been doing at all levels. And Justin's going to talk a little bit about how it feels in the classroom.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Justin Barazza. I teach 10th and 12th grade English this year. And to kind of, you know, expand on what Deb was saying a little bit, we're really fortunate, I think, that we're able to focus on narration and its popping up on things, whether or not super successfully, like MCAS, because the sort of things in the past that might feel like a fun assignment, in terms of the, hey, let's think about like, you know, write a letter from this person's perspective, we're really comfortable codifying now, and we can, we're feeling more confident building rubrics and really asking, you know, what we're asking the students to do is demonstrate their literacy, their digital literacy, right, in a world where so many people are racing to either get the story first or get the story right, whether it's from journalism or I saw this and I have a Twitter account. We're really teaching the students not only how to read the texts, but to read the world around them as well, as part of the four things that we're always constantly focusing on, reading, writing, listening, and speaking as well. So we're looking at things like voice, like Deb mentioned. One assignment, you know, actually features following a separate piece and noting how the power changes and turning that into a visual, which is not necessarily something that might, you know, you might think about in an English class, right? And people are coming in with graphs about how the power changes over time, citing evidence, while here this, you know, Jean said this, and the passive voice was used here, which do we know, you know, is he remembering correctly 15 years later, after he's suffered through World War II and all of its horrors? So that's one opportunity. And we also are very fortunate because we are in an era now where we have classic literature, this foundational literature, like The Odyssey, for example. And I know it's really easy to think about The Odyssey. It's like, oh, come on, really? Like, we're still doing The Odyssey? But, you know, we have Emily Wilson's female translation of The Odyssey. We have Circe. We have the Penelopee ad. We have Barbara Kingsolver's The Bean Trees, all of which are an odyssey, but they're coming from very different angles, and we're seeing different sorts of characters being represented. And so we can compare those journeys, we can compare the tropes and the archetypes that pop up, and really access this social capital that does come from a very old text, but allows and encourages our students to recognize when we move into the world, this sort of stuff is coming up, and how, as Deb mentioned, how do we own this? How can we own our own storytelling? You know, it would be great if we could have the students remembering the tiny little details and, you know, what, you know, a dangling participle is, but we really want them to be able to feel like they can advocate for themselves, which involves eventually, you know, that personal statement or college essay in a very short, surgical, brief but brilliant piece of writing about themselves. Or are they able to own, you know, what's happening on the street? Are they witnessing something that they need to be speaking up about? Are they able to record the things that, you know, are kind of happening in the world around them without politicizing it or anything like that? We need to be able to control everything that we can and understand that we're going to write differently when we write a lab report than we write a formal piece of writing, than we write a letter from Jean to Finney, or a letter from McMurphy's point of view. I don't know who would want to read that in particular, but, you know, we're really, we're feeling good about the fact that we can push these sort of fun things that kind of added on to those formal writing pieces in the last, at least 11 years that I've been here, and we can really start bringing them to the forefront, because there's value in talking about, you know, who has the power in this story and why? What's not being said? Is there some hidden curriculum? Is Jean purposely forgetting certain things? You know, is it even Jean's story? We're right in the middle of a separate piece right now, which is why I'm falling back onto that particular story. But you'll see it at all levels, right? Whether it's those foundational texts like The Odyssey, or even, you know, Greek tragedy with the freshmen, you know, things with Macbeth. We have a project that we do with the 10th graders where we ask the, you know, what's the guy that's asking Lady Macbeth out to prom? What's he thinking? You know, like, let's get a look at his diary. Scary thought, again, sort of a high-stake social event. But we're kind of opening up, because when we have these conversations with the students, you know, like, what's the difference between what you say and if Jean had a Twitter feed, right? He would be saying something very different than what he's actually talking about in the book. And it's, you know, we can kind of play around in a very safe way with the uncomfortable sort of, you know, am I putting on a hat? Am I putting on a face publicly to represent something? And kind of get at the deeper common experience that everyone kind of goes through of, you know, do I really want to send this tweet? Maybe not, but I'm going to anyways, right? And, you know, well, yeah, I guess that's one of the goals. We hope that they at least think about it before they send the tweet or whatever, other social media like that. So it's been a lot of, it's been very rewarding. The students, they can describe it right away, and it's really been very rewarding to turn it into something, you know, not necessarily for points, but where we can use the language that we use to talk about formal writing and language and grammar. We can use that language about language to say, oh, this is why that's effective. This is why I'm upset that, you know, my friend's leaving me on red. This is why I'm upset that all of this stuff, you know, he didn't respond. What's going on? So that's the sort of thing that we're able to talk about, like we talk about a piece of literature, and the students are really handling it very well.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Questions from you guys.
All right, questions from the committee?
Ms. Morgan.
So I thought that this was great to hear. I happen to have a first grader, and so I guess my question is, you know, the additional assessment and testing that you guys are either doing, either it's a replacement of something that was done before, or it's something new. It's obviously really important. We're going to, it's going to be one of the key actions we're going to approve later tonight as part of the superintendent's student achievement goal. I'm curious, though, so it's, I've had my report card for my first grader, and I've had my conference already, and I haven't heard anything about, like, my kid, right? And so presumably, he was evaluated in kindergarten, and he was evaluated again in November, and I'm just curious, like, what the plan is for communicating about this to families? Because I guess, I mean, I suspect the answer is, well, if you haven't heard anything, he's doing fine, right? Which is like, kind of great, right? But then also kind of like, would be sort of helpful if we had more of a sense of that? So I was just curious if that's something you guys have talked about, or what you're thinking about that.
I think that's a great question, and I think you're right in thinking that if the teacher hasn't mentioned it to you, then that means it's not a concern at that moment for your child. But I think parents should be informed about the assessments and what's happening in the classroom. So maybe by building base, we could try to think of a way to better inform the parents about the assessments that are happening and what those assessments mean. Absolutely.
However, I do want to temper it to say that that's not, that the reason for the assessments is to inform instruction in order to provide that overall picture of how your, a profile, a learning profile of your students. So I don't want us to get hyper-focused on how is my kid doing on this particular assessment and whether or not they're achieving more than their classmates. So we just have to make sure that we're balancing it by providing the information and how it is integrated into the instructional plan for servicing your student. Because if we start talking about assessments, needless to say, it's going to be, okay, we've given these assessments, and I want to make sure that my child is performing at a certain level. And really, the overall picture is like, providing foundation for their learning on how to acquire the skills that they need in order to comprehend text and to decode text.
Ms. Sues.
So I just want to say that I'm excited that you both sort of started with a goal that you want to achieve, you know, what you want to see in third grade, what you want to see at the end of junior year, beginning of senior year, and then worked backwards and said, you know, what do we need to do in those earlier years? And I think that's sort of the kind of thinking that we like to see and very heartening, and I'm excited to hear that.
Go ahead.
I wish I had a teacher like you in high school. I would have, no, seriously. I enjoyed the literature. I did not like the writing, and by mixing those two together and making it real, I think that's really exciting, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
What else? All right, I have a question. So also on the DIBELS assessment, we have gotten some feedback over the years that, including for myself, whose kids were sort of missed because they were doing okay on the other assessment, but at some point, somebody realized that they can't decode nonsense words, because it just wasn't caught before. So do we have a sense yet, are we catching more kids who need intervention? Is it a different set of kids? How is it different from how we were getting to your, you know, RTI as a result of these interventions?
Yeah, so it is giving us a lot more information about a student's ability to segment and blend sounds. So even though your child might be a high reader, if they are scoring low on these types of assessments, it's giving us more information about how we could better support them, to better understand what they're hearing in a word, and how to build in those phonics and phonemic awareness skills for their child. Yeah, so it's giving us a lot more information about how they, what their whole profile is as a reader, not just what their reading level is or what they're understanding about the story, but how they're attacking words that they've never seen before.
But are we going to need more intervention support, or are we okay with sort of what the model we have?
Well, what our focus is this year is to really support in classroom teachers so that they can feel confident enough to support those students that are in their classroom. So that's what our big goal is for this year.
Dr. Allison Hamey.
My comments, actually, kind of more on the student achievement goal that was referenced earlier, but I'll bring it up now because it is involving the literacy. The goal talks about the different assessments that you're talking about. I was hoping that as that takes place, that we could have some looping I was hoping that as that takes place, that we could have some looping back to tell us afterwards how many students were identified, how, you know, whether they improved because of the intervention, you know, what did, you didn't just identify people, did it actually achieve the goal that you're really trying to do, which is improve literacy? So.
I'm not sure of your question.
It, it's more of a comment that we're being told, for example, that all grades, the goal is all grade two students will be given a time foundations nonsense word reading assessment in September, blah, blah, blah. Literacy coaches will work with classroom teachers to support targeted differentiated instructions based on assessment results. So my comment is it would be nice to know, do the students then improve? Is, is it making a difference, right? It's, that's really what we're looking for.
Currently, yeah, yeah, currently they're progress monitoring and then we have another round of assessments in January and then in the spring. So I think that data is coming.
Right. And so my point is it'd be nice to come, for us to hear that result too.
May I, Hans Ilwitt, what we're looking to do is through all of these different actions and changes so that we have better window into what skill a student needs support in, is that at the end of third grade, there are going to be more and more of our students, not all of our students are at benchmark. So the, that is really, really the goal, but it's, and, and what we'll see, and which will be interesting to follow the data, is that some kids are gonna, it's going to be a different kind of trajectory for different students in part because what is happening now is there's a little bit more granulation, more, maybe more focus on some of these skills that students need to become the readers that they, they, we want them to become. So I think this is a multi-year goal. This isn't something that's going to automatically shift everything, but it's, because teachers have to learn more too in terms of the kind of strategies to support students as well as our, you know, at the, at the tier one, at the classroom level.
Can, can I?
Sure. Go ahead.
So my layman's take on it is that you're kind of going from having one ladder for all the kids to climb up to for the next level to saying, okay, well, we have this ladder over here that's maybe shorter and easier and another ladder over here for different kids and stuff. And, I mean, different, kind of different support. And my point, and I understand that what you're trying to do is see if everyone gets up to the floor. But I'm saying, can't we find out in the meantime, are they advancing on their ladders? You know, are they actually climbing or are they just, like, they're just standing at the bottom of another ladder?
Yeah, right. Well, I, I think one of the things that's going to be interesting with this DIBELS testing that we're doing at the end of the year is just to see really what the progress has been over the year and how many of our first graders are at a benchmark for first grade. Now, we have no comparative data.
Right.
Over time, we will. And, and these lab models that are being created, more teachers are going to learn strategies to help students because I, I know math a lot better, but I do know that at this age, almost they have a math fingerprint if you do the right assessments to see what different kinds of skills that are essential to learn the next thing. But sometimes if you don't have the, the granulation of an assessment, you don't know what those are and so you're not there supporting the student learning that. And we've come to learn, I'm coming to learn, they probably knew a lot before I did, how important skills are to being a very expert reader later. Or maybe expert's not the right word, proficient reader later.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Sherman.
Can I? Can I add something?
Sure.
I'm just saying like also, you know, I think that the way that we want to look at is, is this is a trajectory as it goes along. So even after first grade, if you, the, the, the point of providing or getting, gaining more information is to, even if the student is not where we want them to be after the first grade, that's the information that's going to be passed along to the second grade and then the second grade teacher, so that student, we can see how that student is evolving in their progress. So we wanted to make sure that we're getting the type of information and connecting it to the activities that can follow up to support that. So it's a trajectory. So I don't want us, again, I want to kind of keep us from saying like, here's where we're trying to get to and if we're not there, that doesn't mean it's not working. I want to get us away from thinking like that and thinking that this is a, this is something that's going to maybe pan out over, depending on the student, this might, takes more time with different students, but at the end, we will have students where we want them to be.
Right. Well, I mean, at third grade, you know, they're all, that's, you want them all up here, right?
Exactly.
And that's, I'm saying, it'd be nice to hear what's happening before we hit third grade.
Right. And that's why they were here to, to tell you that and these are the things that they're doing in order to work towards that.
Ms. Sherman.
Okay. So the typical question for a governing board that has budget policy levers, what do you need from us? What, what do you want us to be thinking about going forward?
Let's speak to the mic.
This is sort of the, you're sitting with Santa Claus and he's asking you what you want, okay?
Though we're not Santa Claus.
That's a definite maybe though.
And, and no Red Ryder be in that. Because you'll shoot your eye out.
We've had amazing success with four coaches and we thank you for giving us the additional coaches last year. It was really, really helpful. I think having people who can work with teachers to bring the capacity of teachers up is, is probably the most beneficial thing you can do for us. So we, in the budget this year, we're at the elementary, we're asking a little, for a little bit of money for reading teachers to sort of even that out among the seven schools. And probably if that gets funded, another coach won't be. But in the future, I think having coaches to work with teachers, I, I can't emphasize enough how important it is to have people, accessible, warm, knowledgeable human beings to work with other human beings to, to explain, be next to, to, to help out in, in all those ways. It's just, it's invaluable actually. So that's where, that's where I feel money would be well-spent, particularly the elementary. And, and in the sec, at the secondary level, particularly in English, the fewer students teachers have, the more attention they can pay to the students, the more time they can spend on correcting the papers, which is a killing enterprise, I have to tell you, as much, as much as we love to read. It's really, it's, it's, it takes a lot, a lot of time. So keeping class sizes at a reasonable level is just, is the most helpful thing. And giving, I mean, I will also say, we, we carve out time, particularly the secondary, to talk together in grade groups, in course groups, taking a day and getting a sub, working together to hone curriculum. And so that, that professional development time is, has proved to help us make gains and to do thinking that we wouldn't ordinarily be able to do if we were just doing it by ourselves. So that, I guess in both cases, I'm talking about professionals working with professionals to, to move, to move our thinking ahead.
That makes sense because first of all, there's the Tom Brady rule.
Oh, I don't know that.
If Tom Brady has coaches, then every teacher deserves a coach too. And it's the same thing, no matter how, you know, greatest of all time, but he's got coaching. So every teacher deserves a coach because it's a key to reflective practice. And, and I feel your pain for the English teachers at the high school because...
I don't mean to make it sound terrible, but it's kind of obvious.
No, no, hold on. Hold on, let me get this out. I was a math teacher, I was high school math teacher and you go sit in the faculty room and the English teachers looked at you with disdain because of what you were grading versus what they were grading, even when you were running through proofs. But yeah, I understand the workload. If you're really doing this well, kids are doing a lot of writing, if they're doing a lot of writing, the teachers are doing a lot of reading and we don't want it to get into a cycle where teachers are assigning less reading and being less interactive and that because the workload is too high.
Exactly. Yeah. And that's, and that's it. It's, it's a real fine line before people begin to sort of say, why am I doing this work? So I mean, we have to, we work very hard to make sure that we're keeping things as balanced as, as possible.
Yeah, when you're halfway through the stack, you're number 26 and you're just...
Anything after 20 is a killer.
Yeah.
Anyway, thank you for asking.
Thanks.
Sure. And Dr. McTelly, have you got one thing?
And also, can you speak to the impact that the schedule has had on your ability to work with teachers? Because that is something that the school committee approved in our budget last year.
So the new schedule has really afforded us a lot of contact with teachers that maybe we wouldn't have had otherwise. We're in buildings, going to data team meetings very often, working with those teachers, looking at, looking at student work, being able to then go into classrooms and then use that data to inform instruction and help those teachers look at the data to be able to say, okay, I have these students in front of me, I need to get to know these students, get to know where they are in their work, and then with a coach's assistance, go in and actually use that data to then inform how they're going to teach, how are they going to differentiate, how are they going to meet with groups, how are they going to help students with their writing? So I feel like it's been a really valuable experience and in some schools, maybe where we weren't there as often, we're able to be in those schools because of that, because that's carved out time, whereas we might not have had that carved out time before. It's been a great experience.
Great.
Yeah, it's just, it's extremely valuable to be able to sit with all the teachers at one time, not just one or two of them, to actually be able to sit with them and even meet some of them because we're in all seven schools, sometimes it's hard to even just know who they are. So just to have that time to sit and talk and to see what are their needs, we always ask them first, how, what would you like for us to bring to this meeting? How is this most beneficial for you as a team? And that's been really helping us to just get our foot in the door sometimes.
Great. All right. Thank you all very much for coming tonight.
Great job, everyone.
Deb, is that your pen maybe?
Okay. Next up, we have the Arlington High School and Middle Schools FY21 Budget Needs Requests Presentation. Hello.
I am taking up the least, I want to, on record, I am taking up the least amount of time of the 15 minutes. Here I go. Thank you for having us this evening to talk about our needs at the secondary level. We're in the second year of our five-year budget at Gibbs. Specifically, we continue to enjoy being there. We're very, we're getting very positive feedback from both the parent community and the student community about their respective experience. We are focusing this year on building our tier-one work around social emotional learning and content area instructional best practice. And we're doing this by concentrating on building a robust responsive classroom philosophy, developing a project block curriculum that builds various necessary sixth-grade skills and supporting teachers' instructional pedagogy through coaching and special education support. This work is also allowing us to define our tier-two and tier-three intervention. We are having discussions about what we do for all students identified as needing access to this kind of intervention and as a result, they're developing more comprehensive interventions and are beginning to be able to define our gaps and needs around professional development. Before I get into thinking through that lens and talking about our direct requests, I think this work has been very, we're very fortunate to have this school, first of all. So we're in year two now and we're, we're really finding our way through what, how important it is to have a tier-one, a solid tier-one plan. And I think that in being able to do that work, we're now able to see what we have to do to get a tier-two and a tier-three intervention program up and really running. So when I see we're able to identify gaps, you know, I, I feel lucky to be in that position because I think it's one, when you've actually been able to really identify where you need the help, you can start to plan and put in place professional development that's going to give us the things and the strength and the confidence for teachers to be able to meet the needs of the kids in the classrooms. So before I asked for some specific things, I wanted to really drive that point home. It's, it's that tier-one work that we're, we're fortunate enough to build from scratch here at Gibbs that is really allowing us the opportunity to do that. So to continue to sustain that work next year, we will need to think about enrollment growth and professional development. Through that lens, our, our requests related directly to staffing are as follows, and there really aren't that many. We're pretty well-staffed there at the moment, but we, we would like a .2 increase in math intervention, bringing our .8 interventionist to full-time. And I can talk a little bit more about that if there's questions. A .3 increase in world language to mitigate a 250-plus student caseload in Spanish. And I can talk a little bit more about that if there's questions as well. And a .2 increase in physical education to bring our total phys ed education staff to 2.0. And again, I can also speak to that if necessary. Our non-staffing priorities are as follows. Funding for Wilson training to support the number of students entering sixth grade needing a tier-three reading intervention, directly related to what you just heard about here with literacy coaches in the elementary school. So I can draw some, some parallels there, connect some dots following my asks. Funding to train new staff members in responsive classroom. So we were fortunate enough to have almost all of our, our staff members at the beginning of last year funded to have the training, but now we've added new staff members on, so we need to think about getting them that training as well. In addition to that, we want to be able to sustain the responsive classroom training for all staffs. It's not one and done for sure. We need to put things in place that help continue to have that good work all over our building. Funding to maintain and continue the growth of co-teaching training, and I've been partnering with Alison Elmer with that, and it's something that we've launched this year. I can certainly talk more about if people have questions. Funding to maintain the efforts around project block advisory and co-teaching through our think tanks. And our think tanks are teacher buy-in, teacher-led. So those are the groups we've made within our school where teachers have had certain interests and entry points and they're the ones presenting at faculty meetings and they're the ones doing research and getting themselves some PDs. So it's, it's been a very effective, more than I even could have imagined, way to lift some of these new things teachers are doing off the ground. So I'm very pleased with that work. And that's it. I, I thank you again for having us this evening. I look forward to continuing this work at Gibbs as well as working to vertically align with elementary schools and the Odyssean in the high school. We appreciate your support each year and we know that we couldn't have gotten this really great opportunity for sixth graders off the ground without the support from this committee. So we're really enjoying that support and I think kids and parents are really happy, which makes me really happy. So thank you.
So I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to listen to the budget requests from the Odyssean Middle School. I also wanted to thank the school committee and the voters of Arlington for passing the override last year. That really made a difference, I think, this year with education and going forward. So I just wanted to acknowledge people for the override. There are 900 students currently at the Odyssean Middle School. Next year projections look like we'll be adding about 40 students, so we'll be up to about 940 students at the Odyssean. I have some needs that I think are very much enrollment-based and I have some other things that as I take, you know, kind of the principal's role, the second year as I'm looking around and finding out things that we might need for certain students to do better here at the middle school level. The first request is a .2 PE teacher. Currently, right now, we have 38 sections of physical education. That's compared with 40 sections of art, facts, and technology. I would like them to all be even. There's one part, it's a scheduling, but also it would reduce the class sizes from 24.7 next year to 23.4. We do have a teacher right now who is .8. I think it would be very easy to hopefully make her full-time. A .2 Spanish teacher with the 40 new students coming in. Spanish is by far our largest language and we need to see one more section. Currently, there are eight sections in eighth grade that are for 205 students. Adding an extra section would reduce class sizes from 25.7 students to 22.8 students. I would also like to have half a learning team be added. It looks like right now at the Gibbs, there's 485 students. If we currently have the four learning communities... If we currently have the four learning communities, teachers would be responsible for 121 students per learning community. Class sizes would be average of about 24.2. If we could have four and a half learning communities, that would reduce the learning communities to 108 students, one being 54, obviously, for the half, and that would reduce class sizes to 21.6. With the additional half of a learning community, I'm looking to add a special educator who could work with that new learning community, but also could help us cope with co-teaching and inclusion as our special education numbers are growing. I'm looking for a 1.0 bridge teacher. So, we are working currently, right now, we are looking at other schools that have a bridge program. A bridge program is for kids who are for school refusal or coming back from hospitalization. Unfortunately, I'm seeing a greater need as more kids have trouble with stress and anxiety and depression. I'm seeing more kids refusing to either come to school or coming back from partial or full-program hospitalizations. So, I'm also looking to offer that services. Right now, typically what happens for kids who are missing a lot of school, either if they're hospitalized or if they're school refusal, a lot of times, they end up in special education, and I find the next step is, if they're really struggling, might be out of district placement. So, I am hoping to stem the tide and hopefully give these kids what they need. Looking for a .1 administrative assistant. As we get more people, I think it's a greater stress on the secretarial staff that we have. I'd like to increase three TAs that we have. We're having trouble maintaining and retaining good teaching assistants. Right now, in the Reach and the Compass Program, they are paid at a regular teaching assistant rate. I would like to bump them up to BSPs like they are in the high school. It's about a $5,000 raise for three teachers to maintain them, but I also think it's an equity issue with the high school. Other requests, a .4 math teachers. We're seeing more kids needing math support. We're also seeing some kids who are ELL students, who are far below grade level, that we need to service, and a .4 computer science teacher. Currently, we have 2.6 computer science teachers. At the middle school, computer science is an elective. We have over 200 seventh graders who decided to take computer science. It is mandatory in sixth grade. We had a lot more seventh graders who wanted to take computer science than eighth grade, and I think we will see a continued growth in the number of kids who opt into our computer science program. So, I'd be happy to take any other questions. I did not go into, but I definitely wanted to also plug that there are some supply issues, notably in art, and I think in fax, that might need to be increased as well.
So, it's funny how the, the different structures of each organization cause us to cut through the same sort of basic questions in different ways, and I'm going to try to do a little of what both folks did, because it's nice to hear, it's nice to go third, because you can get to play off of that a little bit. So, first, I do absolutely want to thank the voters, I'd like to thank the school committee, I'd like to thank, as well, our teachers for the amazing progress we've made in Arlington High School and in the district as a whole. Any good result we've gotten in Arlington High School is a result of the folks that go before that make us look good. And so, it really is an entire district that does that. And every time I get in front of a microphone, I think it's important in the world where we often talk about our failures, in fact, we'll be talking about some of our failures in the later presentation today, because every disciplinary incident is something that we feel as a failure. But in a world where we talk about our failures, it's important to remember that Arlington High School, which is currently at 1,415 students and is slated to be at 1,500-plus next year, is part of a district in which we are regularly recognized as one of the top schools in the state, and the state is recognized as one of the top states in the country. And if this state, I say this over and over again, but I think it's important to emphasize, we talk a lot about international comparisons, but if Massachusetts were a country, it would be at the top of many of the international comparisons. And so, it's important to do, to understand that as we're thinking about, you know, the really excellent district we have, and then the very important work we need to do to make sure that we serve all of our students, and that we serve all of the students as a whole person, not just as a test score or a small outcome, because there's always more we can do for our kids. The major, I organized my little presentation, which I shared with all of you, around extending the five-year plan that we talked about last year forward, and if you look, you'll see that the, the trend lines, the basic categories in terms of what things we're looking at remain the same. The main things that are driving Arlington High School's budgetary costs are enrollment, the new building project, and those really kind of structure everything. Within that budget, our major initiatives have been, for the last three years, social-emotional learning, equity and diversity, and rigorous education. And I think we've made progress in all of those areas, but there's still a lot of work to be done. So, doing this sort of within also the high school is a funny thing, because we ask for money now emphasizing sort of a number of staffing increases on areas we're going to put resources, but we have a much higher component of choice. And so, the students then tell us what classes they're going to take in January, and in February, we figure out how to staff those and begin off and posting them. So, the, the good news is that a lot of the time, we're able to push certain things forward and shift things around in terms of trying to be really efficient in how we use the money while keeping the ratio of staffing the same. So, if you look at this year, I have a whole discussion in here about what I call multipliers. And the simple, the sort of simple math of a high school staffing is that there are seven periods during the day, and if you put 20 kids in every class and you want to put a teacher in front of them, for every 20 new kids, you need 1.4 teachers. And if you decide you're going to put 25 kids in front of them, then for every 25 kids, you need 1.4 teachers. The MSBA has called, calls for ratios of 20. That, in terms of fairness and sort of equity across our district, is not what we end up looking for or targeting, but it's an important thing to think about. So, the multiplier that we look at in terms of looking at keeping things constant is, at the moment, 25. If you then go back and look at a building which is designed to have one dean for every 500 students and standards which cause us to have one counselor for every 250 students, and our rate of special education, which ranges between 11 and 14 percent within the high school over various different periods of time, you'd be looking at additional staffing along with that as you have those enrollment increases. If you calculate that out based on those recommended ratios, I get a multiplier of 1.83. Going back to what I said before about 25 kids, we're working from a multiplier of 1.7. So, then what I can do is look out over the next five years, because I can't hire teachers in, I have a spreadsheet of this, in .23, .6, you know, a tenth of a speech and language pathologist. We're going to squeeze out until we get over enrollment, and then we're going to add half of a person here, and then we're going to be a little ahead here and a little behind here and add half of a person there. But that's the logic of the spreadsheet that we have here. And so, the simple math, and I'll, I'll leave it to you, because you guys are smart folks, you read this in advance, and I only get three minutes, because I got to be shorter than Ms. Delfridin Kristin, is that the simple math is that within the core content areas of classroom teachers, we anticipate needing an additional five teachers. That's for math, English, science, social studies, world language, ELL, and, and the elective classes. Last year, we put, we were really fortunate that you folks were able to give us enrollment, staffing growth that kept track with our enrollment growth. That had not been our experience at the high school, because there was so much growth in the elementary schools prior to that. You were not able to give us staffing that kept up with what we call historical understaffing, and you'll notice I've just left that zeroed at this point, because I don't imagine there's going to be a time when we're going to be sort of getting ahead in that. We put the enrollment, the staffing last year towards getting our, those core content areas, math, English, science, social studies, and world language up to reasonable ratios, and so for this next year, our staffing in those will all be just to keep track with enrollment. So, we'll be adding between a .8 for four more sections or 1.0 to hire an entire person. And then the rest of that staffing goes to where we've consistently understaffed, which has been in what we call electives, but is actually the arts and electives, because arts is requirement and PE. And so, we will add a few sections where we can. We won't add as many sections as we might need, and an example of that would be in family and consumer science, where we could fill, we could have filled last year five more sections with one more teacher, they would have all been full. Even if I had the money to hire 1.0 fax teacher, family and consumer science teacher, I won't have a lab for the next three years consistently in which to be able to run those programs. So, we'll be putting it more into arts and other areas. So, those are the major areas there. In terms of non-staffing, there is a digital technology plan, and I just talk a little bit about technology here. I don't put numbers in, because that's something that David Good will be putting into there. And then, I go back to the building. It's important to remember that we're going to be in this tired old building, at least parts of it, for another five years. And so, we are already overfull. Our staff, our classroom usage right now is well over 90 percent, and it's a hard thing to sort of, what's that?
Saying.
It's a hard thing to understand that 85 percent, 80 to 85 percent classroom usage is full, because when you get over 90 or 95 percent, the only way to make that work is if teachers are running from classroom to classroom over every corner of the building, and you can't possibly do that, nor do all the classrooms accommodate all of the different things people do. Right now, we are beyond full. Last year, we needed three new classrooms. We squeezed one, because the lab program shrank their space. Next year, because of the building project and the move to the parterby preschool, we get seven new classrooms, which is awesome, but that's going to cost about $80,000 to furnish and supply. We won't be building the walls or the paint, that's all part of the building project, but that's a corner of the building that's going to have a physics lab in it, that they're going to need another Chromebook cart, that's programmed, that's a big chunk of change that I wanted to mention in here. And then, last but not least, things I just want to make sure that we take count of, there's small asks in the larger spreadsheet that I know Dr. Bodie will be sharing with you. But, one, as we grow, a family and consumer science section requires more food be eaten. When an art section requires more stuff gets painted. So, for those consumable programs, there will be an ask connected to supplies. And then, last but not least, we have decided to move the start time, we've all been here before, 30 minutes back, there will be costs associated with that, in terms of the preschool, in terms of coverage, and in terms of, you know, dealing with students who are coming in from Boston, it might be earlier or later. Those moving pieces are still there, but that's something that will be part of the various lists. So, thank you very much for your time.
All right. Great. Mr. Smith.
Well, you know what? I forgot to mention the special education line. Can I jump back?
Yes, go ahead.
I was like, what am I forgetting? So, just quickly, we asked, I asked for a 1.0 here, if you look for special education. I wasn't sure which category to put it in, but half of it is listed, I'm sorry, where is it? .6 is listed as special education, and .4 is listed as related service provider. That's actually covering a bunch of different needs. One, we're expecting to have 20 additional special education students, so that would be a 1.0 caseload. We also have a shortage in terms of speech and language pathology, there's a lot of need between that and reading, and so, we're looking to expand the services there. And we're expanding the co-teaching. So, the co-teaching program is something you can look at there. I'd love to come back and talk about that as well, that we've now expanded to really be serious about inclusion around the entire school. So, students that would have been in a small group English class, a small group math class, I saw it not, A, not being taught the content by a content area teacher, and B, not with, with peers who are achieving at a college and career-ready level. We've worked to get, one, the curriculum up to where all of those students were receiving a curriculum, a curriculum, and then to move them into an inclusion setting. We still need to add sections in science, because we didn't, had not staffed that program yet. We need an additional section in math in order to spread the students out, to have an inclusion model. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Okay, I want to preface this first by saying, over the past few months, I have been hearing a lot of people come to me and tell me what a wonderful job you guys and your staff are doing. The, the feedback I'm getting from the Gibbs is marvelous. The relationships that the three of you were building with parents and kids are very positive. I'm hearing a lot of great feedback. And Dr. Jang, I also appreciate the way you're thinking in outlining your budget. I've scheduled a high school, and, and I see how the component parts fit in. Basically, the only thing I'd ask you, I, I'm impressed by the three, the three of you, the, the requests are relatively modest, in my opinion. I, I opened the NOVA's document and was calmed by the, how reasonable everything seems.
Wait, I have another list.
Yeah, 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 okay, fine. Dr. Jang, how much duct tape do you need? My curiosities are in a couple of places, and, and it's just me being, trying to think this out, because it's, everything's well thought out. At the Gibbs, .3 Spanish? I mean, how do you get to .3 in a traditional schedule?
I think that's going to cover our numbers. We also, yeah, oh, thank you. I think that's going to cover our numbers. We're also hoping that we were going to find a way to combine it with another ask at one of the other schools and maybe do some combination.
Because when I look at a schedule, I'm usually thinking each, each class period for teachers a .2. So, I'm, so how many Spanish teachers do you have, and why .3? Why is it a .2 or a .4?
I have one.
Uh-huh.
And I think if I'm being honest, when Dawn and I spoke about it, she said, well, let's, well, let's split the difference. So, you know, would I take a .4? Sure. I'd take a .4.
I don't see how .3 works. I mean, I'll cut you to a .2 and, or raise you to .4, but I just don't understand .3.
.3 would cover our numbers. That's, if, if we're looking at our numbers, that would cover our numbers. Is it realistic that we're necessarily going to find one person to do .3? Well, we've got someone doing Mandarin .25 right now, so that was a really good find. So...
.6 Spanish teachers.
There you go.
I love the negotiations. And, Audison, .0, .1 administrative assistant?
Yeah, so my idea is that we're growing by 40, so right now, we have 2.6 right now. So, the .6 comes in Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and her chief responsibility right now does a lot of the guidance schedule, private school applications, fills in for the other teacher, does a lot around MCAS and projects. And as you have 40 more students, that's more applications, more meeting, more parents calling, but not necessarily. So, I'm trying to figure out, there used to be, as I understand it, three administrative assistants when they were about 1,200 kids at the Audison, and so, I almost see it incrementally growing as we get closer to that number of 1,150 kids, 1,200.
Can you logistically do a .1 on this? Because it seems like a relatively small...
Hours.
Yeah.
I know for hours, but, you know...
Yeah, and the, the person that I've talked to would be doing then an extra morning on one day. So, it'd be three and a half days. I'd probably come back to if we had another 40, 50 kids, asking another .1, four out of five, and eventually getting up, hopefully, two, three full-time administrative assistants. So, I'm just kind of going back where there used to be three for about 1,200 kids. Right now, we have, we're going to have 950, just trying to figure out what I think makes sense.
Community learning teachers, I guess that's...
The old cluster teachers?
We just renamed it.
We just renamed it. So, we thought it was easier, so they call them learning communities at the Gibbs, so we thought we would follow suit. I also, in a, just kind of maybe general thing, when I use the word cluster, a lot of time, it doesn't have a positive connotation, so I thought learning communities would be a little bit better, it'd be a little bit easier, so we've switched to learning communities. But if this was two years ago, I'd say 2.0 cluster teachers.
Yeah, adding a half cluster.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, fine.
Yep.
Yeah. I, I'm, I'm with you on that.
Yep.
And the fax supply, the fax and art supplies, I can't imagine teaching art without the requisite supplies, and are, are we thin now?
I think we're thin right now. When I talk to David Ardito, who I think is in the back, and I talk to my two art teachers right now, they're constantly scrambling for supplies. You know, I, I get a lot of emails of, please bring in cardboard boxes, we've decided to do something else, if anyone's still getting their papers in the morning, you know, we're constantly getting things. And as we get more students, I think we're going to need more supplies, and it also gives leeway to do more creative projects.
Just doubling down on that.
Yeah.
We've done the math, they go at about 50 to 80 cents per kid per day, right? Like, when you think about how much money they're spending, they're, you know, my son said, I don't know how they... My son said, I don't know how they do it, I'm never hungry at the end of fax class.
Okay, yeah, because both of you have put the same request in.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I'm seeing your issue, too. Thanks for the thoughtful presentation and looking at Bonnus. It looks reasonable and realistic and something that I'd love to...
Thank you.
Ms. Suss?
So, yeah, so I spent an evening for fun looking at enrollment numbers and comparing to the Kibben report, and it was really interesting. So we're seeing a trend that I think is going to continue probably until we get the new high school, which is, and especially after opening Gibbs, which is that we are having 100 or even more retention from 5th grade to 6th grade. So last year was 101. But we're seeing a falling off now at the high school. So we get, so last year was 88 percent retention. Now, I suspect that as we're doing the construction and things are really difficult, that we won't get, I mean, I know your numbers are based on 100 percent retention from 8th grade to 9th grade, that we just won't get that number. So just in terms of as we're thinking about what our enrollment pressures look like, to realize what the current trends have been, what they're likely to be in the future, and of course, everything's going to change dramatically as we get to the high school. Now, I do have to say, so I don't quite think we're going to get 105 people. I do have to say, though, that I do think it's true that in the last few years, we sort of shorted the high school a little bit because there was so much pressure at the elementary school level. And so we saw classroom numbers increase more than we're happy with. But just sort of to keep all that stuff in mind.
Go ahead, Mr. Jang.
So, you're right. I mean, traditionally, when you open a new building, you get a bump. So Minuteman's getting a bump up. And when you start to construct a new building, you get a bump down.
Right.
So our range, full disclosure, because I've done it both ways, the 105 is based on the five-year historical average, which is about 94.5 percent. What's the number here?
I think the number is exactly the number, the difference, the 100 percent.
Not in my spreadsheet.
Okay.
So, I mean, the 105 I'm doing is based on the service spreadsheet, the actual enrollment and like as of when we started the budget process, and this. But if you went with the retention last year, we'd only get 58 students. And so we're going to be in that range.
Yeah, I think as we develop the budget, we need to have some common assumptions of what we think the likely enrollment at the high school is going to be. The budgets of committee can look at that as part of the, since you're basing it off of a formula, you know, that would, you know... Other questions? Go ahead.
Dr. Jang, you have a couple items in your list, and this question is not just so much for you, but also for Dr. Bodie. One is the changes in the space as the preschool moves to the parter. So I understand the construction, the new construction is covered by building committee, but is the furnishings and stuff, it cannot be?
Oh.
I mean, because it's swing space, we're creating swing space.
It could, it could be. We were waiting to see what happens with the building piece in terms of the construction cost, the swing space cost. I think it's starting to get more definite as we go along, but we've tried, we're trying, we've had some discussions about whether we get the new furniture now, but we haven't gone through the process of deciding what. And so maybe the easiest thing to do would be to, you know, forage in our own district first, and then see where we can get furniture that is being shifted out of another school. We're going to look into that. But I think that's a pretty decent estimate of what we're going to have to do for, because the furniture that's there now are preschool furniture. That's going over there. But we have to have, for opening classrooms, we don't really have extra rooms of furniture here.
Okay.
It's not really swing space, it's expansion space. We're not closing any space and moving over there.
I guess that's true.
Yeah. Go ahead, sorry.
So when we have opened classrooms in the past, we've estimated the cost at $15,000. But because the building project is going to be absorbing a lot of the cost of fixing up the space, electrical, that kind of stuff, I took that out of there. And we are going to forage furniture because there's no reason to buy that. This is really furniture unless we went and bought what we're going to buy going forward, and that doesn't seem reasonable.
Right.
This is going to be furniture we're going to use for three or four years and then sell to somebody else. And, or we'll repurpose it in the building. I would not expect that the projectors, the Chromebooks, the physics supplies are going to be covered by the MSBA. So that's what I was estimating in that amount.
Okay. And then, the second question is about the security guard position that you're asking for. It says, with construction on the front lawn and the building being made both more hazardous and porous by the presence of construction activities, we've requested a 1.0 FTE security guard position to supervise the high school site after hours. And again, I'm just wondering, is that a building project-related cost, or...
I don't think so. I don't think so. Plus, we're going to have two entrances next year, which is another issue. But we're in transition meetings now, as you know, and I think the security is one of the things that's definitely on our discussion. And so we're identifying that this may be very necessary, and it probably would have to come from the operating budget.
Okay.
Has security been part of the contract with the builder? On our other construction areas and stuff, they did security at Hardy, they did security up at all the other schools.
There'll be security.
But what I'm saying is, the security for the site was built into the contracts for the thing, and not carried by the, by the school themselves.
The security of the site is part of the contract. What Dr. Jang is talking about is a, another person. That's not usually in the contract. We didn't have that in the contract to straten. We did not have a security person. We had security cameras.
Didn't we have it at Hardy? Not Hardy, I'm sorry, Thompson? When they redid the whole school over there?
It's a mean to look into.
Okay, fine. I don't think it should be part of our budget. I think it should be part of the contract with the builder. That's all I'm saying.
Ms. Morgan, do you want to go next?
Oh, I sure do. So I really appreciated how, so I didn't expect to come here tonight and say, let's take the FY21 column from the five-year plan, and like, we'll be out of here in like 10 seconds, because it's like, oh, we just want those things. But what I really like is how you tailored your presentation to sort of like bring us back to that, so that we're all speaking with this common language, which was really great. So I have really quick questions for Mr. Maringer, whether your budget asks are in order of priority or not. Are they prioritized or no?
They are not.
Okay. And then, for Ms. DeFrancesco, have you, well, I know you haven't, because I have two 5th graders, and I assume they haven't been surveyed about their language needs. So I'm just curious why, so I can see why at the Addison or at Arlington High School, you would have a pretty good sense of like, well, we've got this whole, these kids want to take Spanish, or all these kids want to take French, because like, by and large, they sort of progress, right? So it's easier for Brian to probably prognosticate on his foreign language than for you, because we don't really know. So I guess I'm curious why, what if all these 5th graders want to take French?
Historically, if we're going on the data historically, if year after year, Spanish is always the most. You know, so if we're basing it on that, historically, that's what we see. In addition to that, it's currently, she currently has very large classes, and she's teaching five instead of four, so she is not teaching a project block, she's not teaching advisory. We had to take those, we couldn't have, we couldn't have done it on four classes. So that's the, that's the other reason for, and because posters fall, no. That's the other reason for the ask. I think not only are we anticipating that it's going to stay at 250, it currently, I mean, it's there now, was there last year, so we had to do the same thing this year. So this is based on those two years of data, plus the historical data before the 6th grade existed.
And then the .2 for the math, so we added, so correct me if I'm wrong, last year, we did the .8 so that we could take the math resource teachers and actually have math projects.
Correct.
Which seems like a win.
Huge.
Like, seems like a really good idea. So then, we added the .8, and then this is just to fill that out because we expect...
Numbers are bigger.
We have more kids. And is there reason to expect that we have more kids who need math intervention coming?
So Matt Coleman, who isn't here tonight, but is the data man, I mean, he does a lot of good predicting about what we're going to need. That ask is from both he and I, and we, as he's looking at the numbers of kids coming up that are currently taking math intervention, there's an increase there. In addition to that, the kids that are currently at Gibbs, those classes are a little bit bigger than we would like to see them, but are working. So that was the other pieces, that they're noticing growth there for kids, and better access to classroom, to the time in the classroom. So having that .2 will do two things. Number one, it will service the larger number that's coming in, and number two, it will also make it a little bit more manageable of a size, so.
Perfect.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Thielman.
Thank you, Lynn. So my question is, when you add up all of the positions, do they, are they within the confines of the FY21 plan of the five-year, FY21 budget of the five-year plan? Have you...
You're asking all of us to guess?
Yeah, I'm asking...
I checked, yeah. I mean, so in, in the request list, yes.
Yes.
So yes.
Okay, so what, okay, so everything...
That's not what we got fund, that's, we don't have funds to fulfill the entire five-year request, remember?
Right, okay. So in the request, but not in the actual what was passed.
Correct. We never, we never went back and cut down the plan to match our budget.
Okay, that's what I was curious about. So the conversation about priorities, I presume, is going to be between you and the team...
Right.
...come back to us?
Yes.
Because you're not asking us to make a decision about whether we...
Not yet. You certainly once you get the superintendent's budget you have every year, spoken about requests that you have that may then change some of our requests. But we've already talked about this as administrative team. We know that the sum total, just even right now, from secondary level, exceeds what we think might be the budget. We're trying to get really clear on this, and it's a very tedious process, because what it means, it's not a simple rollover personnel, because each person may have, you might kick in longevity for one person, a new step, and so each one has to be done individually. And so Mr. Mason's in that process. But we already know, just now, we've exceeded what we think we're going to probably be. And we have the elementary.
Yeah, yeah, they're coming, huh?
Right, so we know, and we've done this every year. It's important, I think, for you to hear, and for the community to hear, what the situation is in each school. But then, we will, we will, as a team, work on what are the priorities, and that will then become the ask in the new, the new budget.
Okay. So, I mean, I'm not going to ask you to, we had this analogy last night at the, about the building committee meeting, we're not going to ask you which of your children to pick, but, so, I don't want, actually, you can answer the question, I think, right now, what your priorities are going to be, but just kind of like, what, could you just kind of tell us and the public, maybe, kind of as you go into this kind of, this dialogue between you guys and the superintendent and the rest of the staff, are you going to be thinking about enrollment? I mean, what's going to drive your decisions, I guess, about deciding what you're going to recommend to us ultimately?
I think this particular year, at least if I speak for Gibbs, and I think I can safely speak for Brian, we're also looking, we're, it's a five-year plan, we're also looking at the numbers below in all of these grades. When third grade comes to Gibbs, there are 540 kids in third grade right now.
Yeah.
If we maintain that number, my enrollment asks are going to have to be larger. So for me, I'm not asking for a lot of FTE, and I purposefully looked at that very carefully. Maybe that's why I asked for a .3. Because of the, as I said, as we identify these gaps, I want to really train the teachers that I have. I really want them to be able to have the professional development they need to launch all of these things that we say are going to be integral for their, their launch into 6 to 12. So I think, you know, my priority, while I want to be able to run these, these sections at a smaller size, and I, you know, I want to be able to mitigate that Spanish, there's not a lot of ask as far as Gibbs is concerned for FTEs, because I really feel like that professional development, which you'll start to see when you hear about special education. I think, Allison, we'll probably talk about co-teaching a little bit. And when Dr. Bodie presents you her budget and what we have in there for PD, that's where I, I guess I would be drawing from. So for me, you know, I think I'm looking down the road more for my enrollment growth because it's going to happen. Year 3rd grade, when they come up, that we're going to need to have some bigger asks for enrollment. Right now, we're maintaining pretty, pretty consistently. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I would also say that, you know, as, one of the other things we're doing right now is we're presenting what we would really like to have right now. And we understand there's budget constraints, and I think there's multiple people that we need to collaborate as well when we talk about the budget. So one of the things that happens is I look from a lens of the building, but I know that there are curriculum directors who look through kind of vertically and think of what they need to do and where they can fit certain goals. So what I like to do is be able to talk to the curriculum directors, because they also have a different view of things that we think that we need, and sometimes, that's a blind spot for me. And I think we also try to collaborate a little bit together so that we can come up with, gee, I can understand why this is important for you, I'm willing to, you know, maybe it's a little bit more important that you have this FTE, maybe, you know, and maybe we kind of go back and forth, and hopefully, we can work together. So I don't know if there's any strict, like, I can, right now, go 1 through 9. So when Ms. Morgan asked, like, was it a priority list? There are certain things that I think are important, and we're also speaking for some of the curriculum directors of what they think is important. And we're, I think we've tried to give you our best guess of the things that we would love to have, but we also know that, as Dr. Bodie said, we're asking for more than we will probably have available, and so we need to go through and have decisions and talk about what's important for us, to pare down the list a little bit, unfortunately. And we also need to talk to the curriculum directors, because they need to have say in their departments and what they need as well.
You made me just think about when Brian and I were talking, too, as well. I know that, I know the cohort that's coming up currently. I know those kids. I know what they're doing, I know what they're used to, I know the sizes. And so when I hear you're asking for an additional half cluster, I want him to get that half cluster, because we, you know, we just at Gibbs worked to get them to a place where they're going to really be able to access, I want them to be able to access. So, you know, while I do need these people, I tried to be as conservative as I could because I also know the money is only going to go so far. And so I really, I think that through line is important. So it's my responsibility to listen to Brian, too, and say, you know, these are our kids coming to you. And I think, you know, we do that collectively with, with Matt, too. So I guess that would be what we would want the community to know. Did you have another ad?
I do want to echo, I mean, one of the things that's really nice about the structure of Arlington and the strong curriculum directors is that they really are looking particularly at the secondary level at that through line. And so when we are doing our weighting of sort of what things we're going to have, you know, somebody will say, you know, well, it's great, but they're going to need X, Y, or Z at the middle school, too, because, you know, they're just having these same issues and the same things. I think if we're asked to prioritize, we're going to do what we've always done at the high school level, which is, we have to prioritize the required classes. What that means at the high school level is losing diversity, losing enrichment, losing programs. So the options that are available for kids outside of the core content areas become significantly less, kids have a harder time getting interesting things in their schedule, standalone classes suffer as a result of that.
All right. I'm up next, I think, right? Everybody else, everyone? So, Ms. DeFrancesco, at some point, it would be great to, I'd love to hear more about what a social, emotional learning intervention model looks like, what its tiers are, not really related to this, maybe with Sarah Bird, you can come back at some point, but it'd be a, I think, a great thing for us to hear about. Mr. Maringer, so if you add a half cluster to 7th grade this year, next year, the following year, you're going to want to add a half cluster to 8th grade, I presume, as those kids move up?
Correct.
Right? Does it, to find, for the, for one year, to find teachers that can teach both two subjects, and then next year, you don't really need them to teach two subjects because they could teach two grades instead of two subjects, does that, is that going to work? Is that doable? Or does it?
I think when we've had, and I think Jason Levy was a half-clustered teacher back in the day. I think we we have been able to find those people. So last year, we had, before we were granted another half cluster, half learning community, we had one in eighth grade. So I think at the middle school level, you can still find that history slash English teacher, that science slash math teacher right now. So if I look at the, you know, in eighth grade, Nikki Hockter and Susan Stewart were both, had a half cluster. I think they did a wonderful job. And then they were able to go back to the, you know, the subjects of their choice, but I think they did an excellent job. So I actually think there's a great likelihood that we'll find great candidates for that.
Great. And then Dr. Jengar, we weren't able to get you all of your requests last year, but I just want to make sure you did get the six FTE because that was more than, more than the enrollment increase, but not the full extra.
Right.
You were pretty generous last year. I mean, I really appreciate it. We were able to do a lot of interesting things with programming, a lot of things with staffing, you know, for the co-teaching was helpful in terms of being able to staff, to get sections in some really specific, important areas to smaller class sizes, the English math class sizes. Like, right now, in the core content area, the class sizes are pretty good. So we're really, we run into two funny problems with staffing. One is, we're just expecting a bunch of kids. And so if you get 100 new kids, you still need four more sections of of English. The other thing is that we were very creative about using everything to get everything. So we had split teachers and all those things. And so we don't have a lot of stubs of teachers where we can add a couple of sections. So one of the things that will happen, for example, which which he is able to do, is we would, if we had fewer than what we're looking at, have to do things like hiring high school teachers who are English social studies or one English teacher versus one social studies teacher. And at the high school level, particularly in the math and the sciences, there's nobody out there. I mean, we, you know, we get this many, social studies must be the best job in the world because we get this many applications. English is second. Guidance is pretty good. But math and science, we get great people. And I got to give a shout out to Matt Coleman, also known as Billy Bean. I don't know where he finds them, but he's already found them before we even post. I mean, he just knows where people are. He's reaching out to people. He draws people from a lot of really great places. If everybody else could figure out how to do that, we'd have a lot of advantages. But it's a lot to do in order to staff that. But yeah, it was helpful.
Great. All right. Anything else? Great. Thank you all for, oh, go ahead.
I'd like to acknowledge the curriculum directors who are here to support the presentation. We have Bill Papacesis for performing arts. We have David Ardito for visual arts. We have Denny Conklin for social studies, and we have Cindy Bouvier for health.
Great. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the AEA budget needs requests for high school and middle schools. Ms. Keys, welcome back to the guest table today.
And I have so much space compared to everybody else.
We can get a few other people to sit with you.
I'm good. I'll be fast. Thank you all for giving the Arlington Education Association the opportunity to share our budget requests with you for the 2020 to 2021 school year. My name is Juliana Keys. I'm the second vice president of the AEA, and I'm a teacher at the Audison Middle School. Most of our requests stem from our growing enrollment and the need to add staff to teach students. I'd like to highlight some of those requests with you that you'll find in the document that we submitted. I'm also going to cover a few requests that are sort of district-wide, not specifically elementary or secondary. And most of those center around curriculum and professional development. In terms of curriculum, as we shift to more and more digital-based curriculum, instead of buying one set of textbooks that lasts for 15 years, you buy licenses to online books and curriculum materials. And those need to be renewed every few years or every year, in the case of some of our curriculum. It also means that, for example, we would love it if all of our special educators had teacher licenses to access all of those online textbooks. And but you have to pay by the license. So we're asking that you continue to increase money for curriculum, for online subscriptions, for curriculum materials for our small group classes. We have a lot of small group special education classes, both for students who need a smaller, more supportive environment but can do grade-level material, for students who can do grade-level material but need a little more teacher intervention than they would get in a mainstream classroom, and for students who aren't working at grade level. And they all need all of the same curricular materials that are being provided to the mainstream classes, including teacher textbooks, manipulatives, and such. And then finally, increased funding for science materials and consumables. That's the elementary school FOS kits, all the way up to our new iScience curriculum in the middle and high, middle schools. So. We'd like increased funding for professional development. One of the great perks of working at Arlington is that there is some course reimbursement for teachers, but we've been burning through the budget item for that in the past few years. So we'd like that to continue to be a perk of teaching at Arlington rather than having teachers who are working on master's programs or something being told, sorry, the money's all been spent this year. We'd also like more specific targeted training for our BSPs, our behavior support people. They are on the front lines with some of our most challenging students, and it would be great if they had some more training. And then we would really be like, if we could get more additional district psychologists and additional physical therapists. And that's simply because these people are work to the bone. Their caseloads are more than one person can do at this point. I'd like to echo our principals. We need more money for art supplies. That's something we heard from all of our art teachers, from kindergarten all the way up through grade 12. And finally, continue to work on providing equitable technology throughout all of our classrooms. We do recognize that great strides have been made in the past year. But, you know, continuing to make sure every kid has access to technology, continuing to update staff devices when they break or wear out or just are too slow to work anymore. And please, 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 reliable photocopiers and printers in all buildings and including any network upgrades that are necessary to do that. Wasting an entire prep period trying to find one working printer in a building with seemingly 18 floors is frustrating. So. In terms of the high school, we want to echo what Dr. Jengar said. One thing that I think you'll hear from all our grade levels is increased EL. That's ELL, ESL, the acronym keeps updating. But English language learners, if we had more teachers, they could even push into classrooms with kids, which would be great. The high school needs just more core subject teachers, math, PE, science, social studies, ELA, world language, facts, and performing arts, just due to numbers. At the Audison, the biggest ask from the teachers was more special educators with the idea that every cluster learning community should have their own. Right now, we have almost there, but not quite. So it would be great to have an additional seventh and eighth grade inclusion co-taught teacher as well as another learning community. I'm going to be bold. I want a full one. Our numbers are going up. Our kids need more support. It would be great to just start us off with a full community. We need another point four math teacher to do more intervention. But also, as Mr. Maringer said, because we have some EL students who are coming in who just lack schooling and just need to be caught up. So they need much more specialized instruction than they can get in a regular classroom, additional PE, Spanish, and administrative assistance. At Gibbs, our teachers definitely supported the need for more math support teachers and additional Spanish. They also said, we just need more support people, and I don't care what that is, whether it's special ed or social worker or school counselors or TAs. But when one student has having a bad day and needs a full-time attention, even if everyone else in that classroom is losing their support. So they just need more people who can step in and help. And, you know, leaving that up to you find people to decide how that money should be allocated. That was the big request from our Gibbs teachers. As well as technology for special education classrooms. When Gibbs was started, it was the idea that every kid was going to get a Chromebook and carry it around with them. And that model changed last year to having Chromebooks stored in all the classrooms that the kids could access. But when kids go to their special education classrooms, they don't have those Chromebooks. So adding a few Chromebook carts for the special education classrooms at Gibbs. So this is what our teachers asked for. We, our building reps went out and surveyed and gathered all this data for us, and that's what we're looking for. So any help you can give would be appreciated.
Any questions? Mr. Schickman.
Okay. Can you explain to me how the course reimbursement works? And what's the impact of the funding not keeping up with the pace?
So when teachers are taking classes at universities, graduate-level classes, if they get them approved by the district ahead of time, the district reimburses teachers at the average state university per credit rate, which works out to be, it's it's only a couple hundred dollars per credit, but it helps. We just had so many people accessing that in the past few years that the line item budget for that money has been spent.
Okay, so our policy is to go to the average state rate. So as the state tuition costs go up, the amount that you're eligible for goes up. Because I know where I work, it's a fixed amount, and that fixed amount hasn't gone.
It is. It's not, it doesn't include all the fees and all of that. It's just the flat tuition rate.
And what, and when we run out of money, we just stop.
You just stop approving reimbursement.
Bodie?
Yeah.
I feel strongly like Ms. Keys, this is really important. And yes, we do go over the budget line, but we do it because it's really important. And I really appreciate the teachers that want to do this. I mean, they have a long day, and they're, you know, a lot of, a lot of the teachers are doing these in the evening or Saturdays. So I I do everything we can to make sure it happens. The rate has gone, jumped up a lot, which was a little bit of a surprise to us because the state started shifting, they used to have, they kept the the tuitions low and had it in fees, and our, and we're not, our our formula is based on tuition. But they switched it about a year or so ago, and that was a little bit of a shock to our, but we did it. We got it covered. But I don't try to discourage. The only thing that we do look for is to make sure that the course is being taken, is one, is graduate level. And two, is something that's would be helpful in what they, what their teaching content areas or their, or the specialist area. And they, I I can't think of a course really that hasn't been that way in a number of years.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
I'll just, I'll just make a quick comment. So professional development, art supplies, things like curriculum materials, those are things that sometimes sort of get slipped under, you know, under the headlines of the classroom teachers and things like that. So I think, you know, we've tried to increase those budgets in the past years. I think we need to.
We're planning to do that. And in fact, we're going to probably do some increases this year. The other thing that we're changing the structure because it used to be that performing arts and art were part of the principals' budgets. And we want to differentiate it into unique departments.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we have the principals back up for the discipline suspension report, two of them at least.
Thank you. So I wanted to go over the Audison suspension data from last year. So there were 42 incidents last year that resulted in either in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension. Out of that, there were 18 students that were out of school suspended. 24 of the incidents were in-school suspensions. In total, there were 34 students who were suspended. Obviously, 42 incidents, 34 students. There were some students who were suspended multiple times. I think the, some of the key takeaways that as you look at the data is the difference in gender. So out of the 34 students that were suspended, 30 were males and four females. Half of the 34 students who were suspended were on IEPs. If you look at the racial breakdown of the 34 students that were suspended, 23 students identified as white, which would mean about 68% of the students who are suspended were white. Last year, our white population was 74%. Four students who identified as African-American are 12% of the students who were suspended. Last year, our African-American population was a little bit over 3%. Three students who were suspended identified as Asian, or 9% of the students who were suspended. Last year, our Asian population was 11%. Three students identified as multi-race, non-Hispanic. So 9% of the students that we suspended fell in that category. Last year, our multi-race, non-Hispanic population was 6%. We didn't have any Hispanic or people who identified as Hispanic who were suspended. Last year, our Hispanic population, according to DESI, was 6%. The biggest reason for suspension was an in-school suspension. So we suspended eight students who were caught vaping last year. Seven of those students were only suspended for vaping. There was one student who was also caught vaping and was also suspended for something else. I am hoping that the number of people who are getting, who are vaping are going down in the middle school just from kind of evidence from kids reporting and parents. I think it has gone down. I'm hopeful with some of the new spotlight that has been seen both from the governor's office, but also unfortunately through some of the headlines. I think parents are a lot more vigilant with their kids if they are trying to vape and they catch it. I think two or three years ago, we were in the process of educating a lot of our parents of what is a vape, what's a Juul, the pods. And I think parents are a lot more savvy. I also think, unfortunately, because of some of the things that have happened, it's not, no longer kind of categorized as, you know, teen rebellion, but I think people are really scared now because of some of the things that are happening. So I'm hoping those numbers go down. We haven't had anyone this year who we have caught with any tobacco or vaping. So I'm crossing my fingers for that. The other thing, which is just a grade, if you look, we had 13 students last year who were suspended were from seventh grade. 21 students were in eighth grade. This year, the eighth-grade students who were last year's seventh-grade students are still getting suspended at a lower rate than their seventh-grade counterparts who have moved in. So so far, we have suspended 15 students this year. Five have been in the eighth grade and 10 have been in the seventh grade. So I'm finding it's a little less of we suspend a certain grade more. Thinking it's just luck of the draw in many, in many respects. We are, this year, out of the 15 kids we have suspended, only two of them have been out of school suspended. We're really trying to keep kids in. If they do, you know, make a poor decision, we are trying to keep them in. We are trying to educate them within the school day. The only times that we're really having to use out-of-school suspension is when we feel that that person's presence would be a disruption at our school. So we're trying our best to hopefully have kids learn through consequences, but keep them educated so they don't fall further behind.
So this year's, or last year's discipline data and today's report is some good news and some bad news. And the the sort of way in which we sort of do the analysis is we've put a lot of effort over the last six years in reducing number of suspensions, and we're addressing students with challenging behavior. And this year, we're now in our third year of rolling out an approach called collaborative problem solving, which I'm not going to talk a ton about today. I'd love to come back and talk to you about it some other time. That's the poster that fell down was just sort of a little visual aid so I could gesture at it at some point during this talk. But we've also done work around cultural competency with students and staff, around social emotional learning. We've had a focus on wellness with events and activities, focus on inclusion. We've had programming for students like Voices United. And we've done a lot of great work in terms of developing student leadership. We now have very active Black Student Union, Gender and Sexuality Alliance, Young Feminist Organization, and the Student Council. The mission is around inclusion and positive focus. And obviously, we have a lot of work around having appropriate programming for academic support because when kids are succeeding in school, they have a lot less challenging behavior. So that's kind of where we are. We've seen over the last three years, which I focus on a lot, which has been the period of the implementation of collaborative problem solving, three trends which really have seemed to impact the disciplinary behavior that we see. One of them, and it's pretty major, is the legalization of marijuana and the advent of vaping. I have some positive sense of what Brian is saying, but I also have some real concerns still. The political situation in the country, which I think has led to a lot more provocative behavior, and increase in mental health challenges, also nationally and in the school. And honestly, one of the things that in the past, I think, was leading to a brief period of higher levels of. And honestly, one of the things that in the past, I think, was leading to a brief period of higher levels of suspension and disciplinary consequences, what I would call better policing, which is just a lot more supervision in the school in an effort to keep the environment safe, you also catch more kids doing things. I think that's turned out now to a pretty positive effort. So if you look over the Arlington High School suspension trends in terms of the number of out-of-school suspensions over the last six years and this year, the pattern has been, the year before I came, there were 96 suspensions out of school. We then really started an effort on not using discipline in that way unless we absolutely had to in terms of what behavior students were suspended for school for. And they really are, again, only really disruptive behavior. Drugs, theft, fighting, vandalism, threats, bullying. Things that in large ways are sort of illegal behaviors if you're not in school. And the pattern after that was 56, 53, 76, 47, and this year, 34. So over the, or last year. So over the last, over this past three-year period during the implementation of collaborative problem solving, we've had a 55% decrease in disciplinary incidents. And that's, that's really good news. If you look at the pattern of that behavior, just looking over this year and last year, there's some even better news, as far as I'm concerned, and some bad news. So last year, those 34 suspensions were 31 students total. So we're just talking about the students experiencing challenged behavior at that level. We had 18 that were substance. Almost all of those were marijuana or THC, vape to THC. Nine that were what I would refer to as conflict, one of which was with a staff member. Six which were disruption, things like theft or not sort of student-on-student, just somebody doing something out there. And one, what I would call chronic, which is kind of a rare case of someone who just kept doing low-level things and we finally decided we had to do what we call Plan A, which is you had to bring the hammer down. If you go back to the year before that, where we had 42 total students, you'd see that 12 of those were substance incidents. And so the substance incidence continues to be high and has risen in the last two years. It continues to rise this year. 16 were for conflict and three of those were with staff. 16 were for disruption. One was for a chronic incident and one was for a student who committed a felony outside of school. And so the really good news, to me, if you think about what collaborative problem solving about, and collaborative problem solving is about having a philosophy that kids succeed if they can. And so the approach in terms of dealing with challenging behaviors is to understand that what you're largely dealing with is a lagging skills in these cognitive skills for dealing with challenging behaviors. And so you want to focus on skill, not will. Discipline, like putting kids out of school, is to keep the building safe, to make it clear to everybody else that that behavior is not acceptable in the building. And we also try to use it to encourage the parents and the students to sort of seek outside support beyond what it is we can provide. But it doesn't teach a kid how to behave if they can't manage their behavior. It doesn't teach them how to behave. In fact, as we know, the other outcome of discipline through suspension is it harms the relationship with the kid and puts them further behind in school. So we really try very hard not to use it. So if you look again at that focus, we went from 32 suspensions two years ago around issues which would be conflict-based, disruptions and conflict, sort of misbehavior that's directed at other people, to only 15 last year. We cut that by more than half. And if you dig down underneath that, when you look at conflict with staff, which is something we really want to worry about, right? If we talk about implicit bias and issues around how we deal with students around equity, one of this sort of surmises is that it's about the relationship with a staff member. There were only three of those two years ago. There was only one last year. All three of those two years ago were with students of color. And all three of those involved escalations from an initial behavior. And so that's the sort of thing we really don't want to happen, right? Because that's something within our control. A student may misbehave, we know that, they're going to get the same consequences from the misbehavior. But when we interact with a student, if we have the training and the relationship, more often than not, we're going to do a better job of de-escalating that. The one incident with a staff member last year was not escalated by a staff member and did not involve a student of color. And so although that's a very small snapshot, because the numbers are small, that, that in terms of data that we're looking at is something that is very positive to me. So jumping ahead, I shared with you all the table of racial disparities for 2018, 19. And it's a little hard to read because these categories are more fluid than we often talk about. So the good news is, if you look at the racial disparities for this year, for African-American students, one, the number overall is just lower. Only 2.3% of students were suspended outside of school. For African-American students, there were only three incidents. But the population is small. In order for there not to be a disparity, there would have had to be only one African-American student suspended outside of school. If you look at other groups that are traditionally over, I don't know what the word is, but have disproportionate disciplinary consequences, the other would be Hispanic students. And last year, there were no Hispanic students suspended out of school. But that's a misleading statistic. Because if you then go to the next category, which is other-mixed, which is a little bit hard to break out, most of, many of the students in that category that were disciplined identify as in part Hispanic. So if you, to try to be fair, the question is then how do I add those all together? If you go then to grouping together sort of the groups of students that would be traditionally have inequitable results, so, you know, black and brown students, Hispanic, mixed race, and African-American, and this is not 100% true, you would see that you had 12 students suspended out of 202 students, which is 2.5, two and a half times the general average, which is the same ratio as you saw for African-American students. So we still have that disparity. It's significantly lower. If you went back three, four, five years ago, it was five times, four times. And what's happened is the numbers overall have gotten smaller, the ratio has gotten smaller, which is a positive thing. And, and that's what we continue to focus on. You'll also see that one of the patterns, which I didn't calculate out for numbers, is that we have a disproportionate number of male students, which is a pattern we see nationally, right? It's 15 students suspended are male and 18, I have that right now. It's 20 to 12. So 20 male students and 12, 12 female students. So that's, that's basically it.
All right. Who wants to go first? Ms. Seuss, go ahead.
So, thank you for this. I'm really glad that we're getting regular reports. I think that's really valuable to look at sort of the whole health of our, our system. I, I'm glad the numbers are going down. I continue to worry about a couple of things. And because there's so many different documents, it's hard to sort of figure out where things are. So one of the things I worry about that isn't you guys are numbers that I see at the elementary schools. And I assume those look like they're out of, I mean, they're, they are not out of district, whatever it's called. There are suspensions, out-of-school suspensions at the elementary school, is what it looks like. So there was, one of the documents.
Incident count by school.
Incident count by school. There's one at Dallin, three at Hardy, one at Stratton. And so, you know, we know from lots and lots of research how absolutely devastating out-of-school suspensions are for students, especially when they're young, especially when they're our most vulnerable populations, because this is often because those are the kids who are acting out the most. And so I just want, I'm just concerned about numbers when I see them at the elementary school. So I, I know, I know it's because you talk about the particular incidents, but I'm just, I, I would love for that number to be zero. I mean, at the elementary school, how devastating that is early on in your.
They have been zero. There's, I, I really don't want to.
And you shouldn't talk about the incidents.
People take that very seriously and agree with you.
Yep.
So these are not taken lightly.
Yep, okay. Yeah, I mean, I think the question you always have to ask is to what purpose? Why are we suspending some? What are we trying to accomplish here? I think too often, the answer is, well, we have to create, we have to show to the other students oh, that this, this behavior is unacceptable and not realizing how devastating it is for that individual student to be out of school at that time. And then the other thing, and I don't know where this is coming from, but when you look at the DESI report, you get sort of these funny things, like one person was suspended out-of-school suspension for skipping class, which also feels like that's not quite, you know, that person is disassociated from school and then we throw them out and they're more disassociated from school, right? And then the numbers for disorderly conduct, you know, which is pretty high, it's at 14. And so I just, I worry about those numbers and I just sort of, you know, I'm glad you're paying attention on it, but I'm just, this is, this is worrying.
Yes.
So first, I agree, right? I mean, that's the bottom line. Suspending kids, I mean, one of the whole points of collaborative problem solving, and you're just going to get me on my rant here because I have my notes. Like if you think about the philosophy, right, which is the kids succeed if they can versus what traditional discipline is used to do, right, which is to say, let's make them want to.
Yep.
Right? And the problem with that is that when you make them want to, the result is externalized motivation, breaking that relationship, it doesn't actually teach them the skills, right? And so the, you know, incentives and consequences as a motivator, right? They teach basic lessons and they provide external motivation. They don't teach complex thinking skills. And so, like, one thing I think to be clear is when you see those things, they're not being used as a motivator, right? We're not trying to make you not do that because, you know, you know you're going to get in trouble. Because for the most part, those, that's not the point of the behavior. Sometimes they're, you know, what they're used for is because some rules are rules, right? And also then they become a launching point for a larger conversation. So just for example, because drugs is the big issue. We've already had 16 suspensions this year. When I come back next year, the news, if that trend continues, it's not going to be as good as it was this year. Almost all of those are drug-related. We hold a 37H, an expulsion hearing, for every single incident of drug possession in the school. Not for being high in school, because the law doesn't do that, but for drug possession. I'll cover this so the kids don't know, but if you, it's a single drug possession if it's not dealing, if it's not something more substantial than that. The purpose of that is to engage the student and the family in conversation, to bring them back on conditions, to make sure that they're getting into treatment and to have, to sort of put them into a structure, which is really our own version of diversion. We don't hold the expulsion hearing in order to put kids into disciplinary situations. And so, I mean, you know, it is really important how we do it. And one of the hard things about the DESI stuff, part of why I actually, my numbers that I give you, that I report back are from me pulling the stuff up and going through those cases and coding them myself. Because you just get weird things in the DESI data. You know, we've had incidents where I know two, you know, where it's just like, there are two kids in a category. There's one in there where it said there were 11 kids who had an incident, 13 of them were suspended. Right? Because they pull from different lines and they add them up in weird ways. And I want to know what the numbers really mean. So.
So just, I mean, the disorderly conduct.
Skipping school, nobody gets suspended from the high school for skipping school?
Well, one person did last year.
Yes. And so remember when I said chronic?
Right.
So what ends up happening is that's the code that went in for the incident that happened to be the last straw of a very long period of intervention.
Right. And then just, and I know you know this, but, but like things like disorderly conduct, I mean, I know you know this, but, you know, African-American students with the same behavior as a white student are perceived by teachers often more disorderly. And so you always have to sort of be careful about that and think about what's really going on.
So again, one of the things that we look really hard to make sure, and we actually have a chart, we track this during the year, is to make sure that students are having consequences for the same behavior. And that we're not overpolicing. And it's a real conversation. Like we just recently were having a conversation where some teachers were complaining about kids that were being loud, you know, and it turned out the, you know, dean went down, they were arguing about Star Trek. You know, and so it was like, probably not behavior I'm super worried about, but it was perceived because of the nature of who the kids were and where their kids were, that that was disruptive behavior. And for me, and this is the issue with collaborative problem solving, like what we're really trying to train everybody to do is that when a kid walks in late and says, yo, teach. I don't know who that kid is, I don't know what color that kid is, but that kid walks in and does it. If the response is, John, why are you so disrespectful, disrespectful every time you come in? And if your perception is that's disrespectful differently depending on who the kid is, you're going to have a pattern of behavior where you don't really get good support. And if instead the conversation is, you know, hey Eric, you know, you're late sometimes and like the beginning of class. Can we talk about that? And then you listen to the kid and have the conversation, that's the way you interrupt those sort of cycles of bias and build the relationships.
I also don't know if the disorderly conduct, so you have a menu of things that you can choose from. So I don't know if that's a high school or middle school thing. But a lot of times, that's the, when you're trying to decide between a couple of categories, that sometimes is the default that you would put in there as well. So if you had a kid who flipped a desk and yelled at a teacher or whatever and you're going in school and the next day, usually it's disorderly conduct. It's also seems to be something that when you don't have something that accurately depicts on the menu, a lot of times you default to calling it disorderly conduct because you have to call it something.
Do we have a disorderly conduct at the high school?
I don't know, there's 14, there were out-of-school suspensions last year for disorderly conduct, according to the DESI numbers.
Dr. Alson Apey?
I also have a question about the DESI numbers. Just, it has bullying, it has one incident with one out-of-school suspension. And that just seems low, given the other data that we have that people are experiencing bullying and stuff. And I don't know if that's because of what you say, that, you know, it's the weirdness of this report or the coding, or if it's because the bullying is treated in different ways and so it doesn't even show up. I mean, if someone's caught bullying another student, it's treated in a different way and it doesn't show up here at all. It just stands out compared to all these other numbers that just one seems low.
So at the high school, we've logged one case of bullying as a suspension. So the law and practice right around bullying is when, I mean, for one thing, many incidences of bullying are incidents of conflict, right? I mean, the language of bullying is specific and legal, right? And it involves repeated behavior, it's hostile environment with a power differential. Whenever there's a complaint about bullying, we do an investigation. We make a determination of whether it's bullying or something else. Often it's something else, but the something else is still not okay. And those students may end up on behavior plans, they may have interventions. But for the most part, they do not escalate to the point of ending up as a, as a suspension out of school. Because that would have to be pretty much, you know, you were told not to do this. We were really clear you did it. It was differential and you continued to do it. And most of the time, it's resolved with more restorative justice, more behavior, more conversations and mediation.
Yeah, I'd say that's accurate as well. We can't say that, you know, there was one bullying case six through 12 last year. But I think a lot of times, we're able to hopefully curb that before it does become an out-of-school suspension. So there's a process that we follow, procedures that we follow, including calling in parents, doing paperwork. If people are on an IEP, reconvening a team. There's a lot of things that we do. It hopefully doesn't escalate to where an incident happens that all of a sudden we're like, we warned you, we've been through this, you're now out of school. A lot of times, something might happen along the way and a kid might be, it might be the second offense that something happens and you might be dealing with that specific event. And then you're meeting with the parties involved and saying like, that is the second thing. We're considering that's bullying. If you do something else, then we're involving, you could involve the police, you could have another out-of-school suspension. But I think a lot of times, as Dr. Zheng said, there's not something usually that says, we've met, your parents have been in, you've continued to do it, now you're suspended. And so I think we're not claiming there's one bullying case, but we're saying that hopefully we've addressed the bullying earlier before it had to be coming out of school suspension. So, and that might be in in-school suspension, that might be detentions, that might be some restorative justice piece that has happened before it's risen to that level.
Thank you.
Are there questions? Mr. Schenck?
The vaping thing has me worried. And I know that in Lowell, we're seeing a boatload of suspensions for vaping. Is there, I'm at a loss to figure out what we can do to look at this differently so that we're not tossing kids out of school and they're not vaping. How, what kind of interventions are we able to establish that might allow the kids to retain in school? And why is it, I, you know, I guess, you know, this is a violation of policy to be in possession of vaping equipment within the building. But how do we also identify this as being a, an addiction issue? this as being a, an addiction issue that we're addressing?
I think it, I think it looks, and I'm not sure if Matthew would agree with me or not, but I think it looks different in the middle school than it probably does in the high school. So, I think in the, in the middle school last year, we caught eight kids who were vaping. More kids than that, obviously, were vaping that we didn't catch. I think a lot of it is experiment, experimenting, you know, kind of first, you know, a seventh grader, or last year, it was mostly all eighth graders that we caught. I think at the high school, it's, it's probably a little less tobacco that you might be worried about. It's both. None of the things that we caught were drug-related with vaping last year. My sense is, and my hope is, as I've said, is that at the middle school level, 13- and 14-year-olds, it's harder to come by right now, and it's also, we haven't got the reports from parents, we haven't got the reports from kids, that it is as bad as it was last year. You know, when we do have someone who vapes, our first call is to Cindy Curran, who talks, and kids have to do, they have to either go through a diversion program, or they have to pay a fine. We keep them in school so they're not out of school, you know, because we want to keep them there and keep them educated, and part of what they're doing is the diversion program that is being set up.
So if you're suspending, it's probably a repeat?
We didn't suspend anyone out of school for vaping, and we didn't have anyone that we caught as a second offense for vaping. It was the first time last year that we would catch someone vaping, that we'd have an in-school suspension, we'd call Cindy Curran, Cindy Curran would get in contact with Arlington Health, they would come in, there'd be a diversion program, things that they would have to do so that they wouldn't get fined. But we don't, you know, I don't feel for tobacco and vaping, that we needed those kids outside of school. We wanted to keep them there, but also have a chance to talk to people and hopefully do their work.
So first, just to make a distinction from what you talked about vaping, there's jeweling vaping nicotine cartridges, and then there's vaping THC. And the little cartridges of THC that are about this big sell for about 25 bucks, and they have 25 joints in them at 90-plus percent THC. They are very powerful, you take one hit of that thing and it's like you just smoked a joint, right? So it's a very different thing in terms of people's understanding about THC. At the high school, our response to vaping of nicotine is similar to that at the middle school. It's a tobacco violation, it's a drug paraphernalia violation, it's an MIA violation, so students will miss athletics if they get caught, and that's probably one of the strongest motivators. The students will be searched, and this is part of the issue there, and then they get diversion, they get a motivational interview, they work with Cindy, and they get a fine, which actually goes to the parents if they don't participate in the program. The issue for us last year was out of control. Kids were coming to us complaining about kids in the bathrooms, like, you couldn't go to the bathroom because you were walking through kids. Teachers were just sort of opening the door to the bathroom, saying, "All five of you, come on down," and they were bringing them on down. Those drug, and many of those drug offenses were teachers with six kids in the bathroom bringing them all down, and we searched them, and then they'd end up with THC in their bags. So that was last year. It feels this year, and I have no data on this, other than sort of how people are reporting incidents, that with the sort of issues around vaping and lung disease, and parents finally saying, "No, this isn't just a cute thing, it's a big deal," that we've, fewer of the, just kind of a group of kids going in to take a hit on somebody else's vape before they go off to class because it's funny and it's social. And it's really sort of a more surreptitious or more involved group of kids. But, the vaping of THC is seen by a lot of kids as normal, it's safer than smoking, it's safer than drinking. If you look on the YRBS, you saw drinking went down, offset by an increase in THC. The number of kids who are sort of seriously using substances remained probably the same, but a lot more of this was THC. And what we're really finding concerning this fall, and I, you know, I've talked to a lot of public health folks about this, is that if you think about the combination, because this is what's happening, of vaped nicotine and vaped THC. Vaped nicotine is way more addictive than cigarettes, and cigarettes are way more addictive than marijuana. But vaped THC is much more habit-forming. Kids, we have the experience now of kids who vaped THC, and like, they don't remember when we caught them, because you can take so much THC in such a short period of time that they are really substantially affected. We have reports from people not in our school, but if, you know, elsewhere else, nobody went to emergency rooms from smoking joints, and it would take like, a month to get it all into you. But, they are now going to emergency room from vaping THC. So it's really concerning behavior. And we are seeing what appears to be just more aggressive, more sort of drug-seeking behavior, and more kind of a group. And it's not, the nice thing about, you know, a school is, we say these things with fear because there are 16, you know, 15 cases in a small period of time, there's a group of kids we're worried about. It's a school of 1415 kids, and the vast majority of kids aren't doing this and don't want to have anything to do with this. And the main inconvenience for them is that they can't find a bathroom they want to go to. And that's a real issue, but it's the nature of the building. But, the other issue is a big one. So, just today, the main speaker at the event was about jeweling and about the effects on people's lungs and what's going on. The second, one of the other presentations was about drug addiction and sort of the sequence of drug addiction. We're working on public information, we have meetings with the kids, we're going to be having class meetings coming up in January. And I know, is Cindy still here? You know, Cindy runs and with Arlington Youth Health and Safety Federation, a lot of parent forums to try to get the information out to parents. I actually think, I mean, for us in the high school, it's going to be about building relationships and getting the kids who are currently already in trouble. For folks coming up from the middle school, it's like trying to get cigarettes out of the, all over again. And it's going to be about changing the attitudes of parents to be able to realize that, like, it's much more, it's much more worrying behavior, it's much more destructive behavior than, you know, sort of an occasional this, that's not really a big deal. And that's something that's just going to have to change norms again.
All right. Quick?
This is something that I think, we have a lot on our table right now as educators and the stuff, but this is a new thing, this is a new scourge that's coming through. During the 50s and 60s and 70s, we brought into education alcohol, we brought into drugs in the 70s and the 80s and stuff, we dealt with it. This is a brand-new thing. We're going to have to add this to the curriculum in all aspects through, and through all history. It's not going to happen overnight. Just want to share that.
All right. I think if you move on, any last questions? All right, great. Thank you for coming and presenting this.
One of the things that's on my superintendent's report is about today's wellness. I don't know if you'd like to have Dr. Jinger just talk a little bit?
Sure.
Grab him before he goes.
Dr. Jinger, one last thing.
He knows that I was going to ask him. Today, we had Wellness Day from 9 to 11, and it was, from all I've heard, very successful. They, it was so well-organized, you've seen the website that they created for each grade level, and all the students had, as you talked about this, this one assembly on jeweling. But, I'll let you talk about it, because it was really a very successful day.
So Wellness Day, I think, is really the 12th year of what we've called in the past Mental Health Awareness Day. Andrea Rossi deserves huge credit for bringing that to the school many years ago and keeping it going and being a champion. The model that we've been experimenting with the past few years has been a conference model, and part of the idea behind having it be a conference model is we're able to bring in lots of different speakers, we're allowed to, able to have students do workshops, teachers do workshops. And the reason for that is because one of the things we often say about these, you know, workshop days or Inclusion Day, which I'll talk about in a second, is that we act as if, you know, people don't say, "Well, yeah, so one day a week we care about, one day of the year, we care about wellness." But the purpose of this is to get that information into the community and also to build capacity. So, all the folks that are running these workshops are also then often then running those other activities, and it ends up spurring other activities through the year. And so, Andrea Rossi's the organizer, the primary organizer, and then Stacy Kitces does the scheduling, she's our librarian. And with work from our, help from our computer science students, and Dan Sheldon, our computer science teacher, they've actually created a whole scheduling program that ranks what kids want, and shoots them all emails of what their schedule is, and so students are doing workshops. We had therapy dogs in the building, we had a speaker about jeweling, who was Dr. Hartman, who was recommended to us by the Middle Sex Partners for Youth. And then we had, for half the school, the students went to something called the Improbable Players, which is a group that does work around wellness and drug addiction and stress. And they had come last year and were very popular, so we decided to put them in front of more people. And then half the school did a whole bunch of wellness activities. And so, we experiment with that every year. And then in the spring, we'll be doing Inclusion Day at the second, this is the third or fourth, I can't, the fourth Inclusion Day, which is the same basic structure, but it's around diversity, equity, and inclusion with student, teacher, and expert-run workshops. It's really a, it's a fun day, it's really great. Thanks for reminding me.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we are really moving on. So, next item is the school calendar first read. I had actually intended this really to just be a discussion and a vote next week on the first day of school. So, it's helpful to have the calendar there because it shows what the impact of the first day of school is, barring no other changes, but there's still a calendar committee that is still looking at possibly making other changes.
Not the first day yet.
So, my intention is to next week, just have a vote on what the first day of school for students will be, unless anybody else wants to proceed differently. Does that make sense?
Um, I, I think that's accurate. The thing that I think that we could also vote on, because they're pretty much standard, is when the vacations are. It's always in February and April, the third full week of the month. And so, that can vary every year as to where it is, because some people want to start planning vacations, so they can see, to see where we are. If you look at December next year, because of leap year, Christmas is on a Wednesday this year, and next year it will move to a Friday, and so, the proposal on this calendar is something you might want to, you can think about, whether we'll have those three days, and then we'll come back to school on Monday, the 4th. So, it's sort of reversing it. This week, we have a week off during the federal Christmas holiday, and then we come back halfway through the following week. But, otherwise, the other thing that will definitely be set for next year, too, is when we have the professional day, when we have a major election, and next year we'll qualify in that category, we agree to not hold school, have children come to school because most of the, the voting takes place in the elementary schools. So, we already know which day will be our professional development day. So those are the key things we definitely know, and we will, this isn't, this is the first pass of the calendar, it's earlier than, we've done it in the past, we've usually done the first pass in January, but we will try to get, certainly by the springtime, have a better idea of exactly when the early releases will be for the middle school, for conferences and all of that. But we don't have that yet.
So, next week, we'd vote for the vacations, and the very first day of school is September 8th.
I think so, yes.
Yep.
Great. All right. Approval of superintendent's goals. Jane, is there anything you want to say that we had reviewed them? We've already done the first read of those, right?
I don't think so. I think the only thing that's added is what we're going to be using for evidence, which we didn't approve as part of the goal package last year, but I think it makes sense to do so for next year.
Right, we did do that before you joined, two years ago.
Right, we did, yeah.
I have a very short institutional-
Before you joined, it was before you joined.
-college, so, which I'm fine with.
Yes, Mr. Hayner?
I just need a little clarification. I may be reading this wrong. Under the superintendent's achievement goal, I'm reading this that basically says, what is going to be tested? I'm not seeing anything dealing with improving the student. If we identify a student's need, does that come under, I didn't see it under evidence, so, I mean-
Well, the, as we talked about earlier, the long-term, multi-year goal is to have all of our students at reading benchmark by the end of third grade.
I understand that, but it's not-
And what we will use for a measurement on that is MCAS, which is what we have been looking at.
But as I read this goal here, it's dealing with the assessment, not with taking that, any of the data from the assessment and working with it. Am I, I'll stand corrected, am I reading this wrong, or is this how it's presented?
What I, I mean, how you interpret it is perhaps, I'm not quite sure. What I'm looking at are what are the things that we are doing in the district. You heard many of them this evening-
Yes.
-that we're doing to try to move the needle on our proficiency. This last year, actually, we've been looking at reading for more, this isn't just this year.
I'm not questioning that, and I did hear that tonight. The only thing I see under the goal is number four under Key Actions, which says, "All teachers will teach the Teachers College Nonfiction Unit." But, I don't see any, in the goal itself, I don't see anything that's measurable beyond the assessing.
Well, the, the-
Am I reading it wrong? I'll stand corrected.
No, that was, I mean, that was discussed by your subcommittee, right? I mean-
Right, I'm not-
This is what was settled on.
I'm not trying to measure the actions. What, the ultimate measure is what is happening with our proficiency.
Just to be clear, the goal is to do the testing-
Yes.
-and assessing.
For this year.
For this year, thank you.
So, do we need a motion to approve the goal?
Yes.
So, I move that we approve the superintendent's goals for FY, for FY '20.
And standards of evidence.
And stand, yes.
Second. Did that include the evidence part?
Yes, he just amended.
Standards of evidence, yes.
Yes.
Purpose to discuss it?
Sure.
Last year's evidence required, it was suggested that not only a log be kept of communication, but in general, a summation of what transpired, that did not come forward for the evidence when it was presented for the superintendent. Are we not going to have any, I'm just asking again for clarification, we're not going to have any specifics with regard to meetings and things of that nature?
So, the, for the individual schools, so she didn't, she doesn't have the same goal-
Okay.
-for that. So, that was under, it was under instructional leadership for last year, and so that goal has been changed, so that evidence would no longer be relevant.
Thank you.
It's a different goal. Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? All right. The next item was a request from, a repeat request from the, I forget who it's from, but it's related to the-
There's Preston's.
Jason Russell, House, and their CPA application. My own view on this is, I think, probably all of the CPA applications are going to be things that are, a lot of them are going to be things that are related to education in town. In this case, it is a place that we take our students to field trips, and we did vote before to support it, so happy to do it again. But it does sort of set a precedent that, you know, any other group, you know, doing a playground, doing a field, doing, you know, another historic resource coming to us for support, I don't know if that's the business we want to get into, but this one, this one makes sense. Mr. Hayner?
I, I agree with what you said, but at the same time, this deals with the history of the community-
All right.
-and it's a direct curriculum aspect, so I think it's a little bit more.
Okay.
And therefore, I move that we direct the, that the chair to a letter of support.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
I just have a question. Are we just signing our name to a letter, or have we seen the letter?
It's the same letter Jeff did two years ago.
Okay.
Just as we support.
Okay, so there's- Okay, so there's nothing in great detail. Okay, that's what I want to know.
He hit save as and changed.
Karen updated it.
Changed the date.
Karen updated it.
Changed the date and the signature.
It's a good idea.
I added a couple.
Great.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed or abstentions? Great, thank you. All right, superintendent's report.
All right, I have a few things. And the first thing I want to start with is the high school building project. Tomorrow, we will be sending out a letter. I will be sending a letter to parents in the community as well. We'll have an announcement about where we are, an update on the high school project. We've been meeting quite a bit as we look at all, the, all aspects of the project in terms to value engineer. What that means is getting the same, you know, getting the same function, but perhaps with a lesser cost. And we've been in that, engaged in that activity pretty much all fall, which is a, definitely a part of the MBA, MSBA process. During this time, we have had more detail that has been coming on the cost of various parts of the project. And at, we've just recently had asked the project team, which consists of our designers, the architects, our owner's project manager, and then the contractor, to look at the cost estimates and to see if they can bring what was a gap between the budget that's been approved by the community of $298, $290.8 million. That is the budget that we're going to work with. But as we've gone through this process of actually having more clearer design numbers, the estimate has exceeded the budget. And so, we've been going through the process of having to bring the design and the cost of the project to the budget. And so, we're engaged currently in that process, but we felt, as a building committee, that the community should be aware of this. And, you know, what are the types of things that we are considering, and what is our criteria for how to make those judgments? And of course, the first, the first criteria, which is number one, for sure, is the educational program and functionality of the building. That is something that all of this gets filtered through, as well as the building quality, and then sustainability. One of the goals that we had for this project is net zero, meaning that we were able to have a match between the energy generated and the energy used. So, the, these commitments remain, remain in place as we go through this process. And there are some large decisions that we're going to need to make. And one of the other filters of sort of thinking this through is there are some things that you can't change later, you can't add later as you get bids in. And so, those could be the things that we choose to do later. And so, in order to bring the budget completely in line with the design. And so, one of the things is, is just the number of geothermal wells that we would have. The commitment is still to an all-electric building so that we are not fossil, using fossil fuels as we go forward. And, you know, what would be, we've looked at a deep analysis of what would be effective reducing the number of geothermal to another number. So, that's something that the, the building committee is thinking about. There are other major considerations as well. One might be, other large items might be lighting and artificial turf of the athletic fields. This is something that you can decide on later. But there's a lot, a lot of discussion that's going on about that in terms of the program. The bike path connection that we've talked about, again, that could be added later. The one that is a large item, which is the ramp on the east side of the building, which is the CVS side, that would have to be, that's a big now because that's not something that can be added later. It has to be a phase one decision. But there are other issues as well that we're going through and balancing off. We went through a very long, two-long meetings this week, doing a real look at each one of these items. And next Tuesday, yeah, next Tuesday, we're meeting to, again, look at how we're going to come to consensus, if not consensus, at least majority, on, on, you know, what we will have to reduce or wait till later to get the, the design and costs in line with the budget. And the thing that's really important to know is everybody's taking very, very seriously and very committed to making sure that we have an excellent facility that meets all of our programmatic needs. And we want to make sure that we, we remain a carbon neutral building going forward. So, it's, these are, these are really tough decisions, and we wanted people to know about this and not know about it after the fact. And, and our meeting is, again, next Tuesday, and possibly also next Wednesday. We've been meeting a lot. There's been a lot of subcommittee meetings with our architects and contractor to really understand the, the impact of any decision. So, I think I pretty much got the full picture, but you might want to add a few other things because Dr. Allison Amp is on it. Of course, Mr. Thielman chairs the committee.
I just wanted to clarify that as we discuss the, reducing the number of geothermal wells, part of the reason that that is under strong consideration is that we are finding that we're able to meet the same sustainability goals even with the reduced number of geothermal wells through alternate, it's called VFR, and I don't, I can't tell you what the mnemonic stands for, but the point is that we are able to still meet our goals, so.
No, I just think it's important for people to know that committees work really hard, put in a lot of time, a lot of hours, a lot of meetings, a lot of subcommittee meetings. And I think we've come to a very good place. Tuesday and possibly Wednesday night, we have, like, the final couple of decisions to make, and we'll take votes, and we'll see where they go.
This is a process that will continue through the whole project, actually. We're hoping that we are very successful in our bidding process and that we, you know, have some positives that come to make some costs not so expensive, and, and we don't know what that will be until we actually get our first package out, which some of it will be actually out, you know, probably in January, February, because we're going to be beginning the work for pre-construction starting after February vacation, actually, probably during it.
Some bids are going out as we speak.
Yeah, some bids will be going out. We have to get, we have to decide.
So, yeah, I mean, even though, I mean, we're, we're still staying on our timeline for construction that hasn't changed. We looked at a lot of different options, including trying to collapse some of the, you know, phases.
Yep.
That was hard to do. We, you know, we're, we're in a, we're in an environment where prices go up. But, you know, when you look at other projects around the state, because I work a little bit in, you know, in different places from my day job, and I meet other people involved in building projects, it's not unusual for a building project this size to be in this situation. We have to make reductions, so.
I was talking to a school committee member in Brookline.
Right.
They're dealing with this, that, that when you get these really big projects that are really complicated, and theirs is very complicated all for another reason, they're seeing a 10% change just from the last six months in terms of there's, there's fewer subcontractors that can do projects this big and this complex. And so, it's the market demand. And there are more projects coming online. Belmont's already outbidding. Waltham will be behind us. Belmont, or Brookline is, so there are quite a few. And there's only so many subcontractors to go around for these really big projects.
And we're learning a lot, like, you know, Kathy, Michael, Kristen, I know all about chill beams, things like that.
And Mike, yeah, Mike is on this, too, yes.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you know, who knows? Could come up at a cocktail party, and we'd fit right in.
Yeah, we, we are learning a lot. That is very true, very true. But anyway, I, it's important for the, for all of you to know, and some of you have been attending the meetings, which is terrific. And I think you can see the very thoughtful discussions that are, that are going on about all this.
You know, I'll say that, you know, what the, what the design team has said, and maybe they say this to all their customers, I don't know, but they've said that we have a very, you know, our meetings are not big battles with, you know, chairs being thrown and people yelling, and they've seen that in other districts, number one. Number two, there are people on the, there are, yeah, there are, there are people on the committee with a lot of expertise. And we have, we have people with, you know, John Cole ran a big architectural firm in the, in the, in the region. You know, lots of people have a lot of expertise in this field. So, Ryan Kotowski can run circles around anybody when it comes to HVAC stuff, so.
Kate Lucian has.
Kate Lucian has a background, right? That's, you know.
She does this sort of.
She does this sort of work all day long. Frank Callahan is in the building trades and really asks unbelievably good questions about, you know.
Yes. Right, this is a very.
It's a smart group of people. So, they are impressed.
And thank you for your leadership, Bonnie. You really get us through all of this.
Well, they put the guy with the least amount of intelligence in the chair role. That way, there's, it's easy. The least amount of knowledge of all this stuff.
I also wanted, we're, we're going to send this out very soon to save the date. And I want to thank AEF for making this possible. We're going to have a learning summit for parents, families, and the community on basically what our SEL program is like in the, in our schools. And it's going to be on Saturday, May 2nd. And we will send that date out, just to keep reminding people about that. And then, the last thing is about snow. I sent the letter out, but, you know, the forecast is we're going to have some really, potentially very snowy days. And I just want people to understand the kind of thinking that goes into this and when it starts. It starts very early in the morning. Our director of transportation is driving around Arlington at 3:00 in the morning. And our cust, our head custodian is as well, and we're in communication. And with DPW, they're talking to DPW. So, it's a very, it's, it's a very team approach to this. And, and the thing that's, at the heart of it is safety. On the other hand, we're, not on the other hand, but we also live in a very, we're living in a winter. And New England is winter. And so, when, when do you make that decision that it's, it's not going to be safe for students and staff? And that last Tuesday was an example of that. We became, became very clear, not initially, but later in the evening, that the duration was going to go longer than we thought. And it, it even went longer than we thought. So, but, at the same time, parents need to make a decision themselves. We, we look at, we look at Arlington, the same thing for staff. We have to look on basis what's going on at Arlington. Now, it's not, now, it's not outside of Arlington as much in terms of whether we have, the walkways, you know, cleared and treated, and parking lots, are the roads clear? Not every curb, curb cut's going to be clear. These, these things may not happen. But just want everybody to know that it's very, it's a very stressful decision, I must, I must say. But if they think that they're, it's not safe for their child to, to travel to school, then they just need to let the school know this. And we understand. That's it.
Great, thank you. Consent agenda. All items listed below are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event, the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of warrant, warrant number 20091 dated 11/19/2019. Total amount, 1-534-464.82. Warrant number 20105 dated 11/26/2019. Total amount, 476-195.81. Approval of minutes, regular school committee minutes, 11/14/2019.
Hold.
And approval of trips, OMS Drama Club, New York City trip, May 16, 2020. So, we're holding on the minutes. Do we motion for the rest?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Any abstentions? Or, or no's? Okay. Unanimous, and then the minutes? Was there any discussion, or you weren't there?
I just, I need to abstain, that's all. I wasn't present.
Any motion on the minutes, actually?
So moved.
Second.
Any, any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
One abstention.
One abstention.
All right.
Thank you.
Policies. Mr. Schuckman?
Hey, we're, we're policies. It's a beautiful thing. We had a meeting the Monday before Thanksgiving to mop up some things we were discussing previously. The second re, BEA, is it the second read?
No.
Moving our number from 20 down to 19. Meetings will have to schedule.
Yes.
And we, once we get the new, new calendar adopted, we can sort of look to pencil in our 19 days.
Yep.
Now, going to BEDB, Agenda Format Prep Dissemination First Reading. We're getting rid of the bulletin boards of the school and posting our agenda online. There's a provision that use the word citizens in terms of being able to suggest business to the school committee, which is unduly restricted because there are a lot of very good people involved in the community who are not United States citizens and want to maintain their ability to talk with us. There's a paragraph we're adding that's emphasizing that this is the only place where we can talk to each other in a deliberative format. And in order to facilitate deliberations and discussions, where we are being talked at, reports and presentations that are directed at us, where we're sitting and listening and not interacting, shall not exceed 15 minutes unless the rules are suspended by a two-thirds vote of the members present. Witten reports may be received by a vote of the committee. In fact, it's a good thing for us to do for homework so we know what's going on as the meeting starts and entered in the record of the meeting. And we expect that they would not be read to us. And that we're stating that, look, we're, we're a K-12 education. We're one of the best school systems in the state, in the state and in the nation. We're constantly ranking high. And it would be our expectation that presentations would be consistent with the high standards that we have for teaching and learning throughout the district. There's another paragraph we are adding. All published agendas shall, shall contain the following language pertaining to accessibility for people with disabilities. This is strongly advised by the Attorney General in correcting the word "public participation" to "public comment" in the references.
May I?
Mr. Chairman, it's your meeting.
Yeah, let's go through the, the presentation of the different policies first.
Okay. Now, we're going to BE. Again, this, for the most part, we're just bringing this into conformance with open meeting law regarding the accessibility. Adjourned meetings were called for in the policy. They are not permitted, per se, under the open meeting law. If we have what we once considered to be an adjourned meeting, it has to be posted as a new meeting with a 48-hour advance notice. And so, we've adjusted the policy for that. And on KF-E, Fee Structure for Rental of School Building State Space, we're essentially just cleaning up the Group Four to move the parentheses where it would belong, and then deleting the paragraph, "The Schedule of Refundable Damage Deposits, the Energy Charges, Rates, and Applications of Rental will be reviewed by the Business Office by March 15th of each year and approved by the School Committee." We've, we are looking to delete that paragraph. So, that is what we're bringing before you at this point.
Okay, Mr. Hayner?
On BEDB, first bulletin.
Yeah.
I think either, something has to be put in there with regard to emergency because the 48, you can't change the agenda except for emergencies.
With the disclaimer of the agenda.
There's something about emergency meetings.
No, what, what you're saying is that, no, I hear what you're saying.
Any.
Obviously, state law trumps. Obviously, state law trumps or takes priority over what we're writing in the policy.
I, some way to, dramatically, just slipping the word with regard to emergencies, it would still be appropriate. Agenda's posted with a disclaimer regarding emergencies, that agenda is, the agenda is tentative. An emergency, the, the chair can always add anything right up to the last minute, right during the middle of a meeting if something happened. I leave it to the chair.
I mean, I mean, I don't want to get into making edits on the fly. That's the only thing.
I agree.
I think it's, it's a good, good thought and good suggestion, but yeah, I mean, if you come up with a sentence you'd like to substitute, it's second reading.
I'll, I'll bring it to you. I'll send it to you.
That would certainly be something I, I think is more than appropriate. I think
Thank you.
All right. Any other comment? Yes, Dr. Allison Ampe.
Okay. I'm also commenting on BEDB. I want to register my disagreement with the 15-minute rule. I feel that it's the wrong, okay, I understand the thought behind it, which is to create a higher level of reports that don't go beyond a certain amount. I think a set time limit is restrictive and to have it be able to be waived by a, by a rule suspended, I mean, only have it be able to be waived by a two-thirds vote of members present means that the chair can't just say, okay, I think it's okay to do this. And I, when I brought this up before, it was like, the response that I got was that, well, I think the chair will, you know, people will probably go along with the chair. But the thing is, people have to know how much time they're going to have to present. I also think that this is putting into policy something that I think is more appropriate as direction for the superintendent, with feedback going directly to her or him, whoever superintendent is at this point, and ultimate feedback as part of the evaluation process. So I voted against the BEDB as presented here and will vote against it again if it's brought this way to us next week.
Yeah, my, my view, my take on this was also similar. There may be some items that we know in advance are going to take 20, 25 minutes. As the chair putting the agenda together, I want the presenters to be able to know that they're going to have 20 or 25 minutes and not be subject to a vote as to whether they're going to have it or not. So I, I would be willing to have a 15-minute guideline unless, you know, the chair decides otherwise type of language, but I wouldn't be able to support it this way either.
Is there a further comment? Mr. Thielman?
I agree with Kersey. I think it's, I think that the chair should be given the direction, the discretion and should work with the superintendent. We only have, we have a 10 o'clock rule that limits what we can do here anyway and people get tired after about nine. So I think it's just good judgment on the part of the chair. I take Paul's point, which is we're here to deliberate and talk.
Good guideline, yes.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't disagree with the point, but I think, I think it's too descriptive and then it becomes, it has a danger in a future committee, maybe, I don't think it would happen in this one, but in, in past committee I was on, I think it would happen. You would, it would get very political in a hurry. And you might not get a two-thirds vote to, you know, let somebody talk longer.
Chair, Mr. Schuckman.
Yeah, I mean, first of all, the intent is that we're not being talked at.
Yeah.
The agenda item can go 15, 30, 45, 60, two weeks, whatever it is. But that the person who's starting and sitting at the table over there isn't going to be talking at us for more than 15 minutes, unless there is a, a, a vote to waive the rule. Now, town meeting operates that way with a seven-minute rule. And the result has been tighter, more focused presentations. And when you have an unlimited amount of time, the, the presentations can just go much longer and be unfocused. The discipline of having to come in within a prescribed time limit will require people to be more thoughtful about what they're bringing to us, to be placing stuff that is best off read by us in a written format, to make PowerPoints, a summary that we're talking off of, and then bringing us to a point where we can be interactive. That's the intent here. And because we end up being a captive audience, we, we've sat here for an hour on, on, on certain presentations where you take a look around the room and, and folks here are disengaged. And that's not a good thing for anybody because you'll have somebody talking at us and we're not being, we're not really listening. And for the folks who are watching on television, the point is if we're looking to convey information to the folks of Arlington, we need to do it in the best manner we can. And in a tight, disciplined presentation, unless the topic is complicated enough that we recognize that we want somebody to talk to us for more than 15 minutes, is an important thing. I, I just think that we need to take a little more control over our meetings and to raise the standards for, for the, for what comes before us.
Ms. Seuss.
So I think the key half-sentence here is unless the rule is suspended by two-thirds vote of the members present, and that that could potentially be changed to unless prior approval of the chair and get at your concern, would not get it, Dr. Allison Ampe's, all of your concerns. But it might be something that would have a broader support. I don't know if that's a friendly amendment or, I mean
You know, or, or it could be worded like a, a two-thirds vote or by prior arrangement with the chair. So if the chair says, I'm giving you 20 minutes and it's on the agenda.
Yeah, I sort of, I sort of do agree with the sort of thinking that, that the chair should be involved in this decision, that a presenter should know beforehand whether he or she is going to have 15 minutes or 20 minutes or whatever it is. So I, you know, it's, that, that's something I could easily support, just unless prior approval by the chair or something like that.
Yeah, they add a sentence, add a phrase, unless
I would take out the two-thirds. I, the, I think that's, that's what I could support.
Take out what?
Well, well, hold on.
That's just a suggestion. I'm not, I, I don't know if I should make a
Why don't, why don't we all think about it and come up with something for second read that, that we might land on?
Dr. Allison Ampe.
I just, I realize I forgot one other point that I was going to make, which is also, I also wonder how the chair would effectively do, how this rule would work in practice, you know, so got to have a timer and then there are 15 minutes, time's up, and there are clearly several slides later. Do you like beep? But you know, it, it's, I just don't see this working in a way, I mean, as it's written, as a policy, I don't see this working in a way as it is in our benefit or in our, in the student's benefit. I think it is more, it would be better directed to the superintendent.
If you have 17 slides remaining after 15 minutes, in which you were talking solo, you do not have a well-rehearsed presentation.
Ms. Morgan, did you have your hand up?
I, I think that the, I would, I would support this as is. I do think the challenge of the exceeding 15 minutes and the suspension of the two-thirds vote is challenging in practice to some extent. At the same time, I have, there's been, I could count on one hand in the 18 months I've been here, presentations that I think warranted much more, of the, of the presentation part warranted much more than 15 minutes for the level of detail that we need, that we can absorb. And I would be really grateful for more of an, you know, more of an executive approach to some of the presentations that we've gotten. So I would support this as written, but I recognize that it has some, it could have some practical, you know, if somebody wanted 20 minutes and not 15 minutes, it would be hard to practically give them those five minutes until we got here. So, you know, I would also support it being at the discretion of the next, of the, of the chair.
Yeah, Mr. Hainer.
I think setting up the agenda the way it's been done, I look at the time set on some are 15 minutes, some are 20 minutes, some are 30 minutes. I respect that. The only problem is the 20-minute one tonight went an hour and different things. Not for naught. Some of the, you know, a lot of it we owned because we were asking questions and things of that nature. So the 15 minutes may belong to them, not us.
I know, that's
We, we, we've got to be careful of that. The other part with regard to doing it, town meeting has that nice big clock up front and the speaker gets to know exactly how much he or she has and you'll see a lot of people, they're going strong and all of a sudden they, they wind it up. I would agree with what Ms. Morgan said. Majority of them could stay within that time. And if they need more, I think the chair, it should be discretionary to the chair. But by putting it in there, I, I would not be asking us for a vote. I don't want to get tied up into the minutia of, like Congress is going right now, asking for different votes and stuff. It's crazy.
All right. So I think you have the necessary feedback on that. Are there any other policies that people want to comment on?
Are you directing us to suspend like Jerry Nadler's doing? The gentle lady shall suspend.
All right.
A motion to strike the last word.
So we need, we need a motion to approve Policy BEA?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed or abstentions? All right. Subcommittee and liaison reports. Budget.
Budget will be meeting.
Great. Policies and procedures. Anything further?
The minutes from that last meeting are in the, in Novus so that
Yep.
Anyone who wants to go and look at what, how we discussed this and what happened to some of the other things that we're brewing, it's all sitting there.
Great. CIAA.
Nothing to report, but I understand that we have something that we need, are going to be charged with.
Yes. So just today I emailed Jane requesting that the CIAA committee take on, working with the administration, on, on working on a schedule and process and the draft of the new plan that we have to submit under the Student Opportunity Act, which is due April 1st. So in the, in Novus is the part of the new law that describes the plan.
Mm-hmm.
Relatively vague, but there's a requirement, there's going to be a requirement, CPAC about it, there's requirement to, we don't have an ELL CPAC, right? We don't have an ELL Parents Advisory Committee.
Not yet.
So it's not quite clear exactly what, how much further guidance the state is going to give on it for the first round of the plan. But CIA seems like the right place for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Facilities. Oh, Community Relations, sorry.
We need something in January, but to talk about the Rainbow Coalition appointment, continue talking about it after school and calendar issues. So we'll try to schedule that in January.
Just a point on that. Dr. Seuss put out a request for opinions from other districts in the MAS C email list. And I recommend you take a look at the calendar from Newton because I just thought the design of that was really nice.
Oh, I, I agree, actually. I love, I like the Newton calendar a lot.
That was
Yeah, that's one of my favorites.
That was nice. That was nice.
I have a short stack of ones I like in Newton's, number one. Yeah.
All right. Facilities. Mr. Hainer.
I met with the Bracket PTO this past week discussing what has been done and what, what is going on and what will be done with regard to facilities. I've met with the Hardy and the Pierce PTOs as well. I would like to commend Jim Feeney, the Facilities Director, and Michael Mason for their help in preparing these presentations and their responses back to any of the questions that the parents have asked. It's been received very positively. The next meeting will be in January, on January 28th at the Dallin PTO at 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Can I? So I'm the other silent member of the Facilities Committee and I haven't been able to attend because, and I just want, but I am on all the emails and I just want to say that what Phil has come up with is working really nicely.
Awesome.
It is doing everything he was hoping for and more. I think it's really giving the parents a sense that things are actually happening in the schools and that there is concern about the building and, and things like that. And I just, he deserves the kudos for them.
Can we see him?
Well, it's just, you know, it's kind of the, it's not
That's something
Oh, it's, you know, it's, it's not complimentary things. It's kind of just the way that, it's, it's the way things are put.
It, it, they've been very receptive. Initially, they, they come off, they're surprised there, but once we had the discussion and finding out who's connected to whom, it, it just hit me. I thought the Bracket School was brand new. It's now 20 years old.
Yeah.
And I'm just getting older. I don't want to accept it, but
It's the email threads.
Who to communicate with and, and who to talk with.
Yeah, okay, great.
My job is just PR. I make no decisions and I promise nothing. Right, Mike?
I remember standing up there watching them demolish the old school.
Legal Services, nothing. Building Committee, we've covered. Calendar Committee, anything you want to?
We had a meeting last night with the community. There's going to be a meeting on 18th. And I mentioned this before, I'd like to put on the agenda for next time to get this committee's thoughts, just to hear our thoughts. We won't, I don't expect any, any recommendation or anything at that point.
Well, I mean, the Calendar Committee is an advisory committee to the administration.
Yeah.
So my thought would be we would wait for a recommendation from the administration, but
Okay.
Well
I, I, I'm just sort of curious. I haven't actually heard from everyone. And so I think part of the information gathering, it might be helpful to hear this committee's thoughts. But it's at your discretion.
I, I agree that, I mean, I, I don't, I think that we should talk it out a little here so that, you know, not only does this advisory committee present data, having a sense of what the domain is, is that it, where, where the recommendation will be going is important. So I would certainly be happy to give my opinion on the calendar process for a minute or two within the context of a properly posted meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's the framing of the issue that's still missing to me. I mean, so the, the, the meeting yesterday was about, only about religious holidays. There was nothing about this issue is going too late in June.
Right.
So are you looking for input only on religious holidays and what holidays we should add or subtract?
So that this year, the only discussion on the table are the religious holidays and then the look of the calendar. This year, nothing is being discussed about before Labor Day or
Yes, Mr. Hainer.
I would just counsel that if any of us send it to you, you don't respond.
So another way
But she's looking to have a discussion. She's looking to have a discussion.
Yeah, another way we could do this is that we could ask school committee members to send something to the Calendar Committee. It's all going to be looked at. We have a bunch of letters to go through. That could be another way to get feedback.
Well, okay. I think we should talk, we have to have a conversation here.
Yeah, yeah.
The committee got, we got elected. We have to talk about it. If it's, I, I think, I think putting, having a discussion now during subcommittee reports without posting on the agenda is not good.
No, no.
Good points.
Yeah, whether to have an agenda item
I think you have an agenda item, calendar, school committee discussion on, on religious holidays. You just put it right up there.
It's just a preliminary. So, you know, still, we're still gathering information. Yeah.
Well, since you're the decision makers on this, I wonder about the timing of it. I totally think you have to have a discussion of it. The question is whether it's now or a little bit later.
So the later would be after we
Well, you have, yeah.
After they've gathered, after the committee has gathered their information.
After the recommendation. Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think it should be
Yeah, okay, yeah.
No, I, I, well, I mean
On the fence of
I have a, I feel like we should let the committee do its job. Personally, I'm interested in the committee finishing its work and then talking. But I'm, I wasn't there last time my wife was, so I got insights. So I got, got some insights. But I mean, I, I don't know. I don't know what, I don't know how to, that's, that's my own opinion, but if the majority of the committee want to talk about, well, waiting for the Calendar Committee, then that's what we do.
All right.
I would feel more comfortable in the Calendar Committee knowing the opinions of the people who might vote on it because I wouldn't want to bring forth a proposal thinking that life is good where you're not, not going to get the four votes.
Yeah, I mean, we'll talk about it.
We'll talk about chair's discussion.
I mean, you've gathered, you've gathered a lot of information, you must have some stuff you can present, so.
Yeah, a lot of emails.
We'll talk about that.
It just needs to be a posted item on the agenda. School committee discussion, I think the chair frames it by saying, we're not going to take a vote tonight, or if somebody makes a motion and it passes, it passes. I mean, I don't know.
No, that won't be the.
I don't think your motion would pass.
Not yet, not yet.
Or, no, I don't know what the motion would be.
I don't think, in that context, the motion would pass, I wouldn't.
Let's wait for.
There will not be, there will not be an item that will allow a vote on the calendar change.
So I think you need to be specific about that in the agenda.
All right. Election Modernization Committee, is there anything?
We're meeting next week, just to, there's going to be a warrant article to extend this committee, there's a feeling that we can't get everything done in a year, so.
Okay. Superintendent Search Process.
We had to postpone the meeting of the 4th because Mr. Koetschler was unavailable. We'll be meeting in this room at 5:00 next Thursday.
What's the date? Do you know?
Take today's date and add 7.
Thank you.
Nothing on negotiations. Liaison Reports. Anything? Announcements? Mr. Hayner?
I wish to commend the staff and the students, the Arlington High School Interact Do Something Club under the supervision of Alicia Majid, worked to collect necessities such as bathroom supplies, socks and gloves, all of which, all of which were packaged together into 80 personal care packages. On the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, Mike Sandler, a teacher, and several of the students who had worked on the packages went to the Salvation Army in Cambridge to serve a warm meal. The students also distributed all the care packages.
Great, thank you. Any other announcements?
Yeah, we had, right after the Policies and Procedures meeting last, a couple of weeks ago now, we all wandered off to the AEF fundraiser, which presented a whole bunch of really great projects that, that our teachers were behind. A lot of great things happening for very small money and, and so that if people are looking to make a donation that gets a lot of mileage, AEF is a, is a good place.
Great, thank you. Any other future agenda items other than we've discussed? Yes, Ms. Seuss?
I'd love to see an agenda, agenda item on inclusion practices that we're doing, sort of like, I know things are different this year, there's a lot of new initiatives, that inclusive, but we've got sort of these co-taught classrooms.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'd love to, I'd just love to hear more about it.
All right, and do we have an executive session? No. All right, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Any opposed or abstentions? Great, we are adjourned.
Right on schedule.